We weren't sure what's going on. All right. We are going to call the regular meeting of the council to order at seven o'clock. Thursday, September two thousand eight, twenty twenty-two. If you would like, please rise and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance. Ms. Atchison is going to be late, so she's there. Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hammer.
Here.
Ms. Nixon is going to be absent. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Raiz.
Here.
Mayor Conley is absent. At this time, I would like, I would entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Nixon and Ms. Atchison. She's late.
I'll make that motion.
One second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they are excused. Moving on to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portion of the agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a written public response. Do I have any public comment?
Perry Hopkins, ninety North Main Street, currently the only block on the east side of Main Street that is not allowed to have plants in her backyard. I had a couple of questions, just for point of order. Who does this body work for per our charter? Who do you guys work for? Who do you represent?
The people of the city, but this, we're not answering questions. Okay, you sat on this council. Shall I read this to you again?
Alrighty then. Is it my, my understanding is this body works for the current citizens, not just potentially future ones. And if my opinion is right, from what I understand of my being in this city, this is my fifteenth September being here. The city manager works under the guidance of the city council. And from what I understand, there's nothing in our charter that gives the city manager the ability to decide what kind of businesses we can have in our downtown. If I am correct. We have ordinances that say what district can have this type of business or that type of business. We don't like bullies in school. We didn't like bullies in the White House. We really shouldn't like bullies in our city hall. Through years of being in meetings with our city manager, trying to grow this community. There has been times where he's expressed interest that we shouldn't have service industry in our downtown. The only thing that we should have in there, he wasn't there, so we should only have bistros and boutiques. And then in the same meeting, there was mentioning of a certain restaurant in our downtown that we needed to find a way of helping them or get rid of them. And so the, the discussion was because it wasn't fair to the businesses like the brewery that was just coming in, the microcanner that had money to put into their buildings for these other businesses to exist that can't afford to do so. And so as we see years proceeding along, it doesn't matter how much time any of the residents in these buildings have put into growing this community. If they don't have the pocketbook, they're being harassed and bullied out. And I landlord, I came in the one day, I got a citation on the front of my dance studio door of a nuisance and addressed to my landlord. Why it's on my door, not his, I don't know. And he was received a certified letter of an infraction. And I can show you pictures if anybody wants to see them of such infractions. But these are, these are maintained plants that I maintain. The only thing that's grown in my back alley on my patio section is of their interest are plants that I use for my own keys and for demonstrational purposes for my customers and clients. The city manager has repeatedly sent the code enforcer down harassing us. He did that with the previous one, how I know he does it because he stood in front of me one time when I called him on something on the behalf of the city. When he got there, he was telling me about these bricks, they don't need to be in the alley. I'm like, well, that's the landlord is fixing the building. So he starts messaging the code enforcer that was here at the time to come violate me. And so I got a letter in the mail about properties that I don't own, but he said I own them. And so he, he harasses people on things that should be of little importance. These are in the back alley, not out on Main Street for public to see. So the code enforcer comes down and the landlord has to have me there to say what these plants are. And she's like, the periwinkle has to go. I'm like, periwinkle? There's no periwinkle in my back alley. What are you talking about? She goes back, this, I'm like, that is chicory. That is my herb. That is not a periwinkle. She starts rambling off a land botanical name that does not sound anything close to chikurium, which is what chicory is. I'm like, no, that is chicory. That is my plant. It's like, it's gotta go. I'm like, I don't know if she's messing with my name. Or she really doesn't know what she's talking about. There's a periwinkle. Well, yes, she can't answer any questions. Chicory will get six foot tall. There's a huge difference in the two. I can show you pictures of the two. But if we don't want bullies in school, we don't want bullies in the White House, we shouldn't have bullies in our city hall. And it's not fair for the people that have been here longer. Anybody that's moved in here that have invested into this community, they know what was here when they got here. So for us to have to leave that we're here before, it's not fair. This is still America. Everybody should have the right to have their dreams and their passions without having to be screamed at, that they should be a nonprofit if they're not out there to make a big buck.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Scott Barrage, fifty-five, number two, North Main Street of Scott's Music Company. And with me I have Mallory.
Hi.
She is with Old Flynn's Art Gallery.
Welcome.
Mallory McIntyre, event coordinator over at Old Flynn's Art Gallery and Craft Shop. So, and I also teach classes as well.
If I could jump in for just one second. Madam Mayor, they're here to speak about a community event application. While they're obviously entitled to speak now if they want to, I didn't know if you'd maybe.
I was gonna say, I think you're on the agenda.
You guys could come back up during that specific time if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
And then you also don't have a four-minute clock.
Okay.
And then you could have some interaction.
And I can like answer some questions and we can talk about your whole community event.
Sounds great.
I mean, you're, I, I'm not kicking you out. You're welcome to stand here.
We can do it later.
Yeah, that's fine. We're, we're, we're good with.
You're on the agenda.
Okay, great. Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure, come on down. I thought there might be red flannel people, but.
They're at, they have a meeting.
Okay.
And I've read this to you guys before, but I think it's always.
Are you a red flannel person right now?
Uh, I'm a volunteer for the Red Flannel Festival. And my name is Rose Powell and I live in Cedar Springs. And many years ago, when Grace and Nina took over the Cedar Springs Clipper. Nina was a prolific writer. And one of the things that always touches my heart this time of the year, and especially with this horrible war in the Ukraine. And she wrote, "As the world wags, the world, or at least a considerable part of it, wageth this week along the red flannel way." And Cedar Springs with its red flannel festival finds itself in the center of national attention. At that time, it was celebrated on Armistice Day, November eleventh. "Those who weep over the passage, passing of olden days of customs of times of yesteryear need only to hear of Cedar Springs Red Flannel Day." "Saturday, November eleventh, to be heartily cheered." "In a world torn by the horrors of war, we pause to remember that Saturday is Armistice Day." And this was in nineteen thirty-nine, shortly after World War One was over. "How wonderful that our land is free from the horror that we can indulge in the frivolity of the Red Flannel Day give and give thanks." "That we can be merry and pray that it may continue."
Nineteen thirty-nine, you said?
Yep. November ninth, nineteen thirty-nine.
Germany had invaded Poland.
So you can pass. Very interesting little article then.
Thank you. Wonderful. Uh, please let the record show that Ms. Atchison has arrived at seven eleven. We did excuse you. Thank you for letting us know you would be late. All right. Moving on, any, any other public comment?
I'm Mayor Connelly.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to let the record show, I'm joining via Zoom. I appreciate you excusing me. Um, my family is recently contracted COVID, so I didn't want to be a spreader, but I will be following along with the meeting.
Yes, I, and I let the rest of council know that you had told me that you had, you were ill. I didn't specifically say COVID because I wasn't sure you wanted that. But you are certainly capable of saying that, so I hope everyone is doing well.
Yes, so far so good, just mild symptoms, so all is going as.
So thank you for joining us via Zoom and I hope your family continues to be okay. All right.
Hello. My name is Dan Spitzbergen. I, my address, mailing address is P.O. Box forty-two here in Cedar Springs. And I would like to address some of the non-conforming property issues that are before you tonight. I've been coming to these meetings now for ten months and I hope we can complete this issue tonight. In your packets is a proposed affidavit for processing the non-conforming properties. And I would like to comment on some of the language of that affidavit. Um, number four, the affidavit states that I understand the city's non-conforming use ordinance and I agree that my property is subject to the city of Cedar Springs non-conforming use ordinance. I, I couldn't sign this document just because of that statement, because I don't, I don't know what it means. So I would like to have someone please explain it to me. Um, item number eight states the described property is located in the blank zoning district of the city of Cedar Springs, which does not currently permit two-family or multifamily uses in the R-one zoning district, does not permit multifamily uses in the R-two zoning district, or does not currently permit residential uses with street frontage and Main Street in the B-two and B-three zoning districts. Item eight should simply ask for the zoning district that the described property is in. Additional language is not relevant, accurate, or truthful. It appears that this process is expanded, also has expanded beyond the non-conforming properties in the R-one zone east of Main Street. And because reference is now being made to the properties in the R-two, B-two, and B-three zones. So apparently this is growing. Just as the record, just for the record, residential uses are, are allowed in both the B-two and B-three zone. Um, in fact, um, I've got a couple of awards here that I was granted when I did a restoration on one-one-one South Main in the B-two zone. And we included two apartments in the upstairs of that unit. And went through all the, this was done in two thousand six, two thousand five, two thousand six. I was granted an award by the city of Cedar Springs and also an award from the state of Michigan for that restoration project. And so to say that it's, that residential uses are not allowed in the B-two or B-three zone is just simply not accurate. Um, they are called dwelling units, if you read the zoning language. Okay, and um, um, chapter thirty-two, article three, division eight, section thirty-two dash three forty-five P. They are called dwelling units and there's seven conditions listed to consider for their approval. There's also language to allow existing dwelling units to be excluded from the requirements. And then item number nine in this affidavit states that the city of Cedar Springs zoning ordinance has not permitted two-family or multifamily uses in the R-one zoning district, has not permitted multifamily uses in the R-two zoning district, and has not permitted residential uses with street frontage and Main Street in the B-two or B-three zones since, at least nineteen eighty-two. Total statement is false. There's nothing true about that. Number nine is not relevant, true, or accurate and should be struck from the document. We all know that non-conforming uses have been legal since nineteen eighty-two in the R-one zone per chapters thirty-two, article five, section thirty-two dash five eighty-four, five eighty-five, five eighty-six, and five eighty-seven. Item number ten. The described property has been used for its current described residential use since the year. And there's no way that many of us know that. Because many of these properties, they were grandfathered in in nineteen eighty-two. They were done prior to that. That's over forty years ago. There's no way we can swear to the date that that started. There's no way we know. We just don't know. So that, that item should be struck or at least changed. Um, number twelve. "In addition to this affidavit, I have submitted to the city other appropriate evidence." Okay, appropriate evidence. What is appropriate evidence? I don't know. If I knew, I would be able to, to do it. But it's not defined. I have no idea what appropriate evidence is. Number fourteen, let's see, where are we at here? Yeah, number fourteen. "I've attached a copy of my property deed to the affidavit as exhibit A." Um, many people don't have deeds. They have legal descriptions. They may have land contracts. Um, so to, to say that the deed is attached, uh, it would be better to say that the legal description is attached as exhibit A. Everyone has a legal description that they can attach if that, if that is necessary. The city has that information, but if it's necessary, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to do it. So, um, those, those items are, are problems for this, this affidavit. And I would like to ask the city council to, to address those issues. Um, also in the cover letter that goes along with the affidavit in number four. Um, it mentions the city council's requirements. Um, uh, I've not heard any definition of what the city council's requirements are for this non-conforming situation. So if you could enlighten me to what the city council's requirements are, I would appreciate it. And in number five, it says, once the submitted information is determined to be appropriate and sufficient. Um, again, a very appropriate and sufficient. What does that mean? I mean, what, why is this language even being used? It's hard to agree like that when they're so broad and, and nebulous. So anyway. Um, I would like to thank you for your consideration and um, um, this is something that you could take a look at each of these things. And if you would address them this evening, um, I think that the council has the capability of, of approving this affidavit this evening if, if you so choose. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Um, Tim and I are both speaking together if we could, and he just doesn't like to get up here, so. First, thank you. Thank you, thank you for your continued commitment to reverse the city's original intent of mandating all multifamily properties in R-one be converted back to a single family upon selling it. As so stated in the letter we received, so thank you. But, and having watched the August council meeting on YouTube, Tim and I were feeling hopeful, grateful. We were so grateful for your willingness to fully investigate this matter, get it on the agenda, share your knowledge and experience on zoning, seeking legal opinion, discussing it openly and honestly in a public setting. Thank you for following the ordinances. Thank you for taking the challenging path, believing it was the right one. After your last council meeting, Tim and I felt the council had decided to push the reset button and acknowledge these multifamily properties as legal non-conforming properties. We felt like you understood that we could not prove our properties were existing forty years ago. We cannot prove for many reasons that they were, and in part due to a lack of city records. This certainly is the case with ours, and I just want to be specific and not leave any question in your mind. We purchased a duplex in nineteen eighty-four. I obtained the property description card from Rebecca and it, and it verifies there was a sale in eighty-four. However, the property description card, where it states whether it's a single or duplex, is covered up. We had, we have the realtor's papers that show we purchased it, but it's the old-fashioned carbon copy, which has since faded. We have the nineteen eighty-four bill of sales, which back in the day, they don't list it as a single or duplex. It just says the property address. I called DTE and Consumers Power asking for validation of when the double meters were installed because they were there when we bought the property in eighty-four. Kind of both chuckled and said, "We keep meter installation records for ten years, not forty years." Um, I, I tried to find the sellers of the house and I could not locate them from thirty-eight years ago. Both neighbors, Mrs. Hunter and Mr. Sabu, who would have lived there forty years ago, are deceased. I cannot prove or provide you a date on when that was converted, even if it was. Maybe it was always a duplex. I don't know. So Tim and I reviews the, review the proposed affidavit that you'll be discussing tonight. Unfortunately, we cannot sign it. We cannot sign it for legal, moral, and ethical reasons, and please let me explain why. First, we cannot fill in the blank specifically number ten, which says, "I must tell you the date it was put into a duplex." As I explained, I don't know. And secondly, number four says, "I agree my property is subject to non-conforming use." The non-conforming use ordinance. I don't believe it is. I'm not gonna say it's non-conforming.
Said you wanted a non-conforming.
But this is saying that I, the quote says, the quote says, "I agree my property is subject to non-conforming use." Mine is a legal, non-conforming use. It is legal because I believe it was before nineteen eighty-two. Thirdly, number five wants us to list the property of the non-conforming use. And again, I'm not going to declare, declare and sign a statement that it's non-conforming because I do not believe, I believe it's a legal, non-conforming. I believe that's very important, that word legal. Fourthly, since number thirteen says, "By signing this affidavit, I am affirming and declaring under penalty of perjury." I can't do it. I can't lie on that form. I can't just make up a figure. I can't tell you that my property isn't non-conforming. It's legally non-conforming. So we still need your help and you can do it tonight. You have the power to get it done tonight. I'll tell you the advantages to doing it tonight. It takes us off your monthly agenda. We, we're on month ten now, month ten. It would allow the city manager to spend his limited time on getting you grants and more productive things. It would free your clerk from answering all the FOIA's and reviewing record appointments. And it would allow us to continue offering safe and affordable housing to area residents and to stop us from suffering more financial loss from not being allowed to rent, repair, and/or sell our property. That's a fact. Will you please consider this? You have an established list of forty-two multifamily properties presented to you by your employee. It's your list. They're described, they're clear, you have the list. Number two, you have a rental inspector that routinely inspects these properties for not only safety and maintenance, but also reports exactly the number of units in each property. Those reports tell you if it's a duplex, a fourplex, whatever. You have those documents in your records. So there's no question about what that, what each property is. And thirdly, you have property description cards that show you the measurements and the pictures of each property. Those are your records created by your employees in your record box. If you really want to push the restart button and acknowledge the forty-two properties you have a list before you as legal, non-conforming properties, there is no need for an affidavit. There isn't. You have all the information you need. You simply need to make a motion, and you can do it tonight, that do what I believe you have been trying to do, is to acknowledge that the forty-two properties are legal, non-conforming properties. It is done. Boom. Not to be talked about again. Please consider doing this for everyone's benefit. You can wrap this up tonight. And then just one last thing, please. Um, may I dispute a statement that was recorded in your August council meeting and in the letter submitted to you describing rental property owners as, quote, uncooperative? I find this statement to be discriminatory and a generalized derogatory description of our community members, and I will exclude myself. But I would ask you to consider all of them. These people are community members and business members who have lived here most of their lives. And they have lived here, they have worked here, they have supported here, they have championed our community to the best of their abilities. I don't want this description of these people recorded in public record as uncooperative. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Well, I got advice from the city manager one day, and that was if you can't understand something, then to hire somebody who's smarter than you. Well, I didn't hire them, but I did run this by some other legal counsel to the affidavit that we're talking about and get their opinion in a legal court of law, what this language demonstrates and what I was, what was expressed to me in which I'm really angry and offended right now that this is even in here. Number four, number eight, and number nine all ask us as property owners to draw legal conclusions that may or not, may not be accurate. All these statements, um, that make a legal conclusion to self-incriminate property owners if this does happen to go to court. We're being asked this affidavit to put this in writing, to self-discriminate us if we go, if this ends up going to court. I don't know why, what would compel legal counsel to interject these types of self-incriminating statements into the agreement? Why would you try to require us to do that? This type of statement would prove to be very damaging to anyone who signed it in a court of law. I was under the impression that city council wanted to push the reset button and grandfather these identified properties as legal, non-conforming as of twenty twenty-two. The affidavit is, it's unnecessary, really. You have all the information. You have all the pictures. Is there a reason why you're sitting there chuckling, Mayor Connelly?
I'm just, no.
Thank you. I find that highly disrespectful. Not your investment that's on the line. We have potential investors waiting to come to Cedar Springs, watching this issue and how it's going to be concluded. They're waiting to see how the city council resolves this before they commit to invest here. You know what the number one indicator of an overall healthy downtown is? I served on the DDA for fifteen years. It's not parking, it's not streetscape, it's not facade improvement programs, even though all of those are very valid and very productive. It's a cooperative city government that is the number one indicator of an overall healthy downtown. If the city council really wanted to conclude this unfortunate situation that we all find ourselves dealing with, it's so simple. Just push the reset button, date the ordinance, grandfather the forty-two properties in, and begin to encourage investors to. And begin to encourage investors to come to Cedar Springs so we can move forward. It's, it's so simple. I don't know why you're making it so difficult. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Eric Ladishkin, twelve nine oh nine, Chainer. Going back to the language of deeming something appropriate or whatever necessary to get this approved by the city. Um, back in January, before this was even an issue, our real estate agent met with a city manager who said. On our property, if you can come to me with evidence, we'll grant you approval. She came with a sworn affidavit, um, and evidence from the city before nineteen eighty-two, that it was a rental property. Wasn't good enough. Um, I talked to the city manager a couple of weeks ago, um, concluding, you know, bringing up that evidence again. And it was told by the city manager that the person who signed our sworn affidavit, a pastor. Who was on the committee in nineteen eighty-two, the building committee, lied on the affidavit. I brought up to him that. We have a council member currently sitting on the board, who was a former fire chief, who I'm sure can attest to the fact that our property. Was a rental before nineteen eighty-two. Would that be good enough? And he kind of gave me the runaround, said perhaps that would be good enough. So that's the issue we have with signing our name and putting our name on the affidavit. What evidence is good enough? And we, if you guys can discuss tonight, what that appropriate evidence would be good enough, because we thought we had it in January. And here we are in September. And it's still being told it's not good enough. So I would like that addressed tonight, hopefully, because we are losing a ton of money at this point. We have tenants who are desperately wanting upgrades. And we can't make the investments right now because we don't know what's going on. It is frustrating. That's all I got.
Anyone else?
Yes, I think Kami might have a comment.
Sure. Absolutely. I didn't even ask if we had anyone on Zoom. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. I am Kami. I am here representing the library.
Yay.
And I'd like to talk a little bit about what happened in August. What's currently happening in September and what will be happening throughout the rest of the fall. So in August, we, the library held their end of summer celebration. And there were four hundred and fifty participants in that celebration. We also attended a back-to-school bash. That was hosted in our community and we had one hundred and seventy-eight participants come by our table. And we gave out one hundred read to ride logs. During the month of August, we had forty-nine attenders at our quilting. Twenty-nine blood donors and five people attend our book club. We really took the month of August to sit down and plan what was going to be happening for the next few months. So here's what's going to be happening. We have a tattlerie sensor station coming up. We have a mini art prize challenge for our teens. We have tie-dyed for elementary and for adults. We have a senior fitness class starting and a charcuterie class is open to all age adults. For families, we have a fall craft show and a children's storytime to go along with that. And for all ages, we are going to have a fall reading bingo. We do have several in library things that can be done. So please stop in and see what they are. September is library card signup month. So if you refer someone who currently does not have a card, they come in and qualify for a card. You will both be put in a drawing for a gift card. So we're having a little referral program.
That's fun.
Our, our seed saving library, which was brand new this year. We had five hundred and fifty-three packets signed, checked out. Now, of course, not every packet got checked out. However, for first year, that is pretty amazing that five hundred and fifty-three. Items were taken and hopefully producing some veggies and fruits. And last but not least, the fire barn is down. It is torn down. It is almost all cleaned up. And it looks absolutely amazing.
Yay.
Yay. And we look forward to what's to come.
Thank you for that. Um, just to clarify, the blood drives will be held at the library going forward.
Correct.
And also is the seed library something that people can donate to?
Yes, it is.
Cause I might have a donation for you.
Wonderful.
Hey, anything else then?
Uh, we do have some openings coming on our library board. We have one right now and one coming up. So if any citizens of Cedar Springs proper. Is, are interested in guiding what? The library will be doing in the future, we would love to have them.
Okay, so two positions. I saw one in my list of things that I.
There, we do have one open right now and another board member has expressed. They would graciously, um, give their, their seat to, to some new folks.
Okay, looking to retire?
Looking to retire.
Okay. All right. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? That it? Anybody else? All right. Then moving on, we don't have any public hearings, correct? Adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Do we have that motion?
We have anything to change?
I don't think so. Revised, it should be revised one.
One, okay. We got it. Uh, Ms. Atchison made the motion.
I'd like to make a change. Uh, can we add to a discussion item of the process of, uh, agenda being made?
Sure. Do you want to, so do you want a discussion item as F?
Last thing, yeah.
Or I'm sorry, uh, E. So an item E would be the how the agenda is made?
It'd be F, you're right.
F, am I right?
Yep, cause E is.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying to scroll between the consent and the discussion and, and a computer, and my printer is almost out of ink. Uh, okay, so F would be how the agenda is created. Okay. Any other changes? So, Ms. Atchison, are you?
Yes, I will change my motion.
So we need a second? Then, um, let's do a roll call because, well, no, I guess we don't need a roll call. We don't, we don't have any money on this. Uh, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, we have an agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. And council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member. And does not require the support of other council members.
Make a motion that we, um, approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call because this one has some money on it. And I would just like to, um, I'm going to point out, I don't want to pull it off the agenda, but we are grant for the pocket park. With the DDA, we were hoping to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We didn't quite get that, but we got two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. The city manager had to madly try to get ahold of me the other day to get it approved, so we could make sure we got on the list. And then it like popped out on my TV eight within.
Oh, really?
No, like, like thirty-five minutes later. So as we were madly texting back and forth. So, yeah.
I just, can we just have a brief discussion about item E? I don't think I quite understand the whole extent of this covenant.
Sure. Do you want to, do you want to put as a actual full discussion item?
We can, or.
So we will move it to, uh, it would be item. Well, we know we just added F, right? So it'd be G?
It'd have to be an action item.
It has to be an act, oh, right. So it would need to be an action item because it's E otherwise. So it would be E.
Are we going to have to reapprove the whole agenda?
No, because, yeah, because we can, it's on the agenda. We're just moving where it goes.
At a mayor, we could also, as Ms. Powell's indicating, just have a brief discussion. It might.
Sure.
Problem, and then we don't have to move anything.
Sure. So do you want to, can Mr. Manager, do you want to speak to it?
Or so is the board is aware, because we've done this dozens of times. We received a grant for eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for developments of the West Street Business Park. Part of the requirement from the EDA in exchange for getting the money is that we have to, uh. Record something called a covenant, um, of purpose use and ownership. It's required by.
I, I'm sorry, if you're going to have a conversation, you're going to need to step out.
So.
Okay, I understand. I'm just saying if you're going to have a conversation, you need to step out.
So, uh, in exchange for the eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, we're required by the EDA to, uh, register this against the property. Basically putting into the chain of titles so that anybody who was to come in to buy it would see this and be, uh, made aware of it. Uh, it basically says that, uh, the use of the property has to be for a legal, legitimate business purpose. Um, which is their way of saying you can't grow marijuana out there. Um, you know, we can't, of course, I'm not clever enough to do something like this, but there's all sorts of weird, wacky things you can do with the sale of real estate. Uh, it prohibits things like that.
It also has some restrictions, if I understand this correctly, because of the, um, the brownfield cap piece of it, right?
Uh, there's a separate document for that.
Okay. And so that's all part of it to, so that it, the actual deeds clear, like. Outline this when people buy it.
Yes.
That's what this is. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, yes.
Any other? Okay, so we good on that piece? All right. So we don't need to pull it off?
No.
All right.
Just wanted to clarify a little bit of that.
That's totally fine. You get to do that.
Yes, I do.
So just if, if it wasn't enough, we'd continue on. All right then. So I'm going to take a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to. Action items. A motion to accept the community building development team land donation of seventy-four North Second Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan. Four nine three one nine, uh, commit up to twenty thousand dollars to the demolition of the existing building. On seventy-four North Second property and authorize the city manager to undertake all actions necessary to effectuate these tasks.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Or?
Okay. Any discussion?
So the only thing I'd point out is, uh, this is currently a residential property. It's in the downtown B two district. Now, normally the city would require that we run some environmentals on this property, uh, so we know what we're getting ourselves into. But as the council is going to wear, the entire downtown is considered a brownfield. Uh, and we do have a lot of environmentals from when the fire station was put in. We are aware that there are certain. Chemicals that exist in the ground. But I guess the polite way to put it would be, we're probably the ones who would eventually have to pay for cleanup anyways. So I don't have too many problems, other than to say that's what the normal course of action would be, uh, is to run some environmental tests. But, uh, I, I think given the use of the land over the, you know, I don't know how long it's been there, but residential use. Uh, as opposed to something like a gas station, it's probably a safer.
Any other comments?
Will we have to pay property taxes on that until it's developed or?
Uh, so property taxes are pretty much based on what the use of the property is.
Right.
If the city is intending to, or if the assessor determines that the city is intending to hold the property for some kind of development. Uh, for profit development, then yes, we would have to pay property tax. However, I don't think that's what the city's intention would be. Just like, you know, just about every other property we own, it's the intention to use these properties for public use, which would be taxed.
Yeah, so and things like parks and parking lots and, and infrastructure and sidewalks and our public use.
I just think about that little parking lot we built and we had to put a picnic table on it, otherwise it wouldn't be taxed exempt.
Well, it wasn't a parking lot was the problem.
Right, and this won't be either until.
Well, it will be, I, but it will be, like, that's, that's the process. Like, when you're building a park. It's a park while you're building it.
And there are some ways for me to.
And we just threw a pi- a picnic table on it and said, uh, until we build a parking lot, it's a.
Yeah, that was the way we.
Just the tax rules, we had to go by them. Save all our folks a lot of money.
Well, it's the, it's the public use piece of it. And if it's a public use, we don't pay taxes on it.
Right.
Because there are, Ms. Powell, there are some, especially DDEs will do this a lot. Where they'll purchase a building, they'll revamp it and then sell it to be used as a business.
Right. That was the intention with, when the, uh, property where the brewery is now.
So under that circumstance, if the city or the DDA were to own it, you would have to pay property taxes. Um, now the rules have actually kind of strengthened in the last couple of years, so it's a more of an affirmative issue. Um, but I think in this instance, we're probably in a pretty good ground of having it being used for a public purpose.
I'm sure it will be.
And like, for example, when we, um, we're in the process of building a fire station, when it's not complete yet. It's still public. I mean, you.
Intention being a public.
Yeah, you have, you have, get to like, take time to build something. So that's a, that is a thing. So. So other questions about this? I'm just very excited that, because this has been lots of moving parts. Um, the community building development team, I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Maybe. Over the course of the summer as he was trying to make this happen, and I'm just very excited about it.
So I spoke with Mr. Maybe myself today, um, and if all things go according to plan, uh, we might actually be able to have the building torn down by Red. If, if we're lucky.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Great. Any other comments on that? So I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? I'm going to take a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to item two. Motion to authorize the Cedar Springs Fire Department to pursue bidding on the auction. Of the Canon Township nineteen ninety-three International forty-nine hundred ambulance.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Manager or, um, Chief Frazier?
So just by way of background, while Mr. Frazier is figuring out his microphone. Uh, we've had two opportunities in the last two years to, uh, pursue vehicles by auction. Uh, we were successful in one and unsuccessful on the other. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I've got a reasonable idea of what the price or a good price for this would be. Um, and that's what I would limit the bidding to.
Sure.
The fire truck that we got, we thought we got for a very good price. So this is a fair way to do things. Um, and so the fire chief and I have discussed this multiple times, and I think we've got a decent chance of getting it.
Anything you want to add on this, Chief Frazier?
Um, if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
City manager summed it up in a nutshell. Um, there is a vehicle that we have possession of that is tired. Um, this one.
That's a nice way to put it.
Along with the chief. Uh, however, this vehicle would replace that vehicle and, uh. Get, um, hopefully sixty, maybe ten more years out of this if we're a successful bidder.
And, and we do have funding available, so, uh, that's not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on council? Any discussion on it? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to the motion to approve Scott's music community event application for Open Mic Fridays through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-fourth collaboration with O'Flynn's Art Gallery. Would you like to come on up and talk to us? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Hey, any discussion? Would you like to tell us about it?
Um, well, I'm the music store in town, as most of you know by now. We do lessons, repairs, and, um, support the music community, which we have a really good one uh, in our city here. Uh, so what we were looking to do is give, you know, we got a nice new patio. Um, thank you, Sonia. Tom for that. Um, as you know, the parking lot was really, really bad, so I'm really happy it became a patio. So what we were looking to do is make the best use of that patio and kinda provide a little platform for some of the musicians to perform. Um, that being said, it's in the heart of the city, so there is gonna be limitations. There will be no heavy metal, no vulgar language. Uh, it's gonna be mostly acoustic guitar. We want kind of, uh, full country, bluegrass, things that people wanna hear, family-friendly music, um, at a reasonable level, cuz again, we realize we're in the heart of the city. We can't be too loud.
You're welcome to come up if you want.
Sorry.
You're fine. If you can't hear me, and I do speak some sign language?
Nope, no sign language.
Okay.
So I'll finish my part, and then I'll let Mallory talk about the event September twenty-four. Um, so we're, we're just looking to do like Friday afternoons. It will be during the day when we're open. Um, so it's some entertainment for the, you know, community to draw people out for shopping and such. Uh, just one more thing that we can do, and also giving some musicians who are kind of wanna perform and, and wanna get some, uh, experience before maybe they move up to the next thing, which would be, you know, playing in clubs or the amphitheater per se. Um, so that's, that's really what it is. If anybody has any questions, I'll let Mallory tell you about the event.
Do, do you have a schedule? Did I see a schedule?
It was gonna be Fridays and.
Call this.
I forget.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be just Friday afternoons, cuz we do realize too, and we're gonna wanna do this next year and every year going forward, so it's kinda something we're hoping we can just do on Fridays, and if we change it, obviously, we'd readdress the council if, if that's something we can do.
Of course.
Um, so yeah, it's just something we're looking to do to add just one more thing of entertainment in the city, to give people something to congregate towards and to drop people out, and city's very beautiful. Um, I would say that everybody's done a good job. Um, I've lived here since two thousand four. I raised all my kids here, um, bought a house in the Pines, which I still have. They're all graduates, and, uh, this is the longest I've lived, and I do consider myself a member of the community. Um, so I'm happy to be here and try to add to it, so I'll let Mallory tell you about our event. It's gonna be an event, um, the two of us are doing. She's from O'Flynn's Art Gallery, so art and music kinda go hand in hand. So.
So what I'm thinking for the music fest is something, sorry, I need the microphone. I usually talk loud enough anyways. I'm half up, but anyways, for the music fest for Saturday, we're thinking just something fun, family-friendly, um, keep it more, um, I was thinking more of an actual band out front of Scott's and having acoustic music and like meet and greets and do a schedule of like every hour a new artist comes on or something like that, something that they can promote themselves to find more supporters, um, get their talent out there. Unless, you know, otherwise, there's, um, other artists that I'm looking for within this music fest is instructors, people that, um, may know some certain, certain talents of different instruments that someone might be interested in. Um, also looking for, um, like, uh, craft people, people that can airbrush the, uh, instruments or do some cool designs or actually repair them or make them or whatever we've got going on. So anything artistic, basically, but I just wanna keep it kinda fun, family-friendly for the city, for the town, and for everybody involved.
Any questions?
Yours is on Friday, and yours is on Saturday. Is it, am I understanding that right?
A one-time event, Saturday will be.
Yes.
Music.
Twenty-four. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Which is.
Maybe we'll make it a once-a-year thing, or maybe twice-a-year thing. I don't know. I mean, it would be fun to do, at least twice a year, at least have some sort of fest, and we can also include, uh, uh, the amphitheater and have a bigger concert at the end of the evening or something like that. I mean, there's forward thinking in this.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay, I thank you. Any questions of us?
Nope.
Okay.
We're good. I can do it, though.
Um, we're about to vote.
Okay.
I love the enthusiasm.
I do too. We're about to vote.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Adam Mayor.
Hold on.
Yes.
Um, so the only, so this is, um, a fairly low-impact event. As Mr. Frazier indicated, you know, obviously, we wanna make sure that the music's not too loud. We do have people who live in apartments up and down the street. Um, the only concern I would have is that, uh, O'Flynn's Art Gallery is on the east side of the road. Uh, Scott's Music is on the west side of the road, so we may have people crossing over the road. Um, and the road is open, you know, to motorists, so they'd have to exercise some caution there, um, just to keep people safe. Other than that, it's probably gonna be a nice event.
And if it gets really big in the future, we can, like, we're spectacular. We can.
Well, yeah, and we continue to, uh, make improvements to the pedestrian crossing over Main Street, but that's my minor concern.
Always. Absolutely. So, Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. You have an event. Moving on to motion to approve the community building development team's community cleanup and celebration community event application on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion. Support.
Any discussion?
So, um, just two minor things. Uh, the first is that the application indicated that they'd be cooking hot dogs. Um, the city does require that
Yep.
all events that are gonna be cooking meat have to obtain a temporary Kent County, uh, food license. I saw no evidence presented that they were gonna do that. Um, and then secondly, um, I mean, yesterday.
They have to do that if they're not selling it?
I believe you would do. I believe if you're cooking meat, uh, basically, the only thing that you're allowed to give away are things that are prepackaged. Um, because obviously, if you undercook meat and then give.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I mean, if you're having like your own cookout.
Uh, that's a family event. There, this is a call to the public.
I see.
So, uh, that's one issue. Um, the other issue, which, uh, may be resolved at this point, is at least when the event was, um, the event application was given to me, I didn't have the information describing what it was, uh, community cleanup. And again, obviously, we're concerned about people falling in the creek, getting run over on the roads, so I just thought the board might wanna ask what specifically they're planning on.
Hey, questions, comments? Come on over.
Building Development Team is just thrilled to be able to donate that property to you, but it would never have been made possible if it weren't for Sonia and Tom Cronkite. And even though we paid ninety-six thousand five hundred for the property, it was well below what they could have gotten for it. So, and it was always done in a collaboration of wanting to serve our community, and I just, I want you to know how important they were in purchasing this. And then also the eighteen, I think it was eighteen thousand five hundred that we paid to, um, remove the fire station. And so we're just thrilled to be able to work it, working with you and for our community, and, um, the bad news is we're down to about zero, so we're, we're fired up, and we're gonna get going, and we're gonna start getting some more money. As far as the cleanup goes, we are just here to serve you. I think Rose reached out to the DP, DPW, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
To see if there's any projects that the city has that we could help. We wanna help the fire station. We wanna clean up all the city parks. We wanna clean up the creek. We wanna clean up any public property. We are also extending that to any homeowners who in the fall may need help raking or removing brush, or anybody who isn't maybe physically able to do that. Um, City Impact has o- offered to do the hot dog part of it. They're very good at it. They will get a license. I can submit that to you. They do it every time. They pass every time. They're very responsible about that. And we're basically just doing it as a, a thank you to the people who are working that day. It's not really just come and have a hot dog, but we're just here again to serve you, to serve our community, to help in any way we can. And I just also wanna call out Rose, who goes to all of our seven AM meetings and really helps us stay, um, focused on what's best for the city because.
Just to clarify, your meetings are gonna be in the evening going forward?
We have to decide that at the meet. Oh, the other big thing is you should have gotten invitation to our community team meeting. We're kinda just starting up again. We have some retired members and we have some new members, but we have a great group of people who are committed to serving. It is really exciting. We have some younger people, and so, um, we really wanna come together, and we wanna find out the best time to meet. What you, what you see are the needs and the wants to enhance an already great community, so a lot of that'll be decided at the team meeting.
Like, I put a kid on the bus at seven oh five.
Yep, yep. And we don't know, you know, we don't know. So we're gonna talk about that. Maybe it's a blend. Maybe it's some morning meeting, some meeting, evening meeting. So, um, that's what that team meeting, I hope all of you can come to that team meeting. It is, uh, Wed- Wednesday, the twenty-first.
I was gonna say, I haven't emailed.
And the cleanup, the citywide cleanup will be, um, Saturday, October fifteenth, from nine to noon or until we get done.
Twenty-first of September, right?
Pardon?
The date.
Right.
The meeting.
You have a.
Right. I, it's in my email.
Number twenty-one, seven PM to eight PM at the public library.
Oh, sorry. And there's an email also.
Yes, and I should have brought flyers for everybody, but, um, I'm happy to email you those if you wanna share them on social media, so. If, do you have any other questions?
At the library.
Last.
I don't, are you good?
I, I didn't know if maybe our bridge would be done by them, and.
No, no, I don't think so.
We've been, we're, we're hoping at this point that maybe it'll have a deck on it so that it would be pedestrian safe.
Uh-huh.
But we just don't know.
Yeah. It'd be nice to kinda combine that with a bridge opening, if it's possible.
Yeah, the bridge isn't gonna be open by the twenty-first.
That'll be a separate event, which we're going to plan at some point.
Yeah, we're trying to actually have like a whole party to celebrate, but
Yeah.
we're not gonna have it even for Red Flannel.
Probably gonna.
Well, we'll have it all cleaned, calm, all cleaned up.
And we may move the hot dog thing in the library if the weather's bad. FYI, and so it kinda depends on the weather, but we're gonna do the cleanup rainstorm.
There's a kitchen in the library.
And Mayor, if I could just echo one thing, uh, Sonia Cronkite has been very helpful, and she's been doing a lot of good things in this community over the last couple of months, uh, including the, uh, sale of this property that we just recently talked about, seventy-four Second, uh, but also the, uh,
Patio.
Patio with, um.
Which looks lovely.
Does. It really improves the downtown, so I appreciate that about the work she's been doing.
Anything else? Moving on then to the discussion, this was a discussion item.
Yes.
No, no, this was a motion to approve.
Yeah.
And we have a, so, sorry, I was already jumping down to discussion item. So we need to vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to discussion items, discussion regarding the zoning administrators' work plan for moving forward with the multifamily non-conforming properties, multifamily issue explanatory letter draft affidavit of legal non-conforming property. Oh, Mr. Manager, so I would like to clarify to start with that the affidavit was drafted through our attorney.
Uh, it was not.
Oh, I swear you told me this when you gave it to me.
Discussed having the city attorney do it, but for various reasons, I chose to take the first whack at it.
Okay.
Um, and.
Who, who was the, the sticky note that said looks good when I got it, before I gave it back to you? M M L?
I'd rather not say.
Okay. Okay.
Um, you know, you, e- every time that we have public comment, uh, it's obvious that there's lots of misunderstanding about, you know, both what the law says and kinda what.
The zoning is.
Zoning is what the processes we're trying to accomplish here, you know? Um, I, I, I I heard the words cooperative and uncooperative a number of times. We're trying to cooperate. We're trying to get this taken care of through a sworn affidavit where, uh, landlords are claiming it's one thing. We're saying, fine, put it on a piece of paper, sign it at the bottom. You've already said it a dozen times. That's the way it is. And now they're saying they're not going to do it. That sounds like not being cooperative to me. Uh, some of the things that Mr. Spitzbergen brought up, uh, might have some merit. Uh, obviously, this is kinda like the first draft. Um, and I'll probably sit down and chat with him a second time. We, we talked once before. Uh, some of the stuff was calling the sky green. I, I, I don't know what to say about that.
There seems to be some confusion about what legal non-conforming as a as an ordinance is.
Yes.
Because it's a thing. I mean,
what I understood the issue was on their side is that some of the places says legal non-conforming, which they're fine with. Please correct me if I'm incorrect. And then some of it says non-conforming, which I do happen to agree with them. I would not be willing to admit that it's non-conforming. Cuz that's what they're saying. That's what we're.
If I could stop you for a second.
Sure.
Um, there is no difference between the terms legal non-conforming and non-conforming.
So can we put legal?
We can.
Non-conforming then?
But, but it's, that's what the ordinance is.
The ordinance literally says non-conforming. It doesn't say legal non-conforming. Legal non-conforming is kind of a colloquial way of saying non-conforming.
So.
The difference.
Just change it to say legal non-comforming?
I have no problem doing that. Um, and frankly, you know what? Here, here's the ultimate problem. Uh, I've been trying to, uh, resolve this issue with about seven different landlords. They all have their different opinions and understandings and whatever. Uh, they then hire an attorney. The attorney says, don't talk to my clients. We say to our attorney, go try to resolve it with their attorney. Their attorney refuses to talk with us. They then come in and say, well, we don't have an attorney. So we then go to their attorney and say, is that true? And she says, no, I'm still their attorney. Don't talk to my clients. I love, absolutely love, put every one of these people in a room and do a roundtable and say, okay, what's your objection to one? What's your objection to two? What's your objection to three? And come up with a resolution. But they refuse to cooperate with the city, which makes them by definition uncooperative. So I'm eager to resolve this issue because that's what the council wants me to do. But there are roadblocks. This is not as simple as saying, magic, it's done. There are legal processes, there are legal requirements that I have to follow. Uh, and I'm, I absolutely refuse to do something illegal myself.
Okay.
As you should.
Ms. Atchison?
Okay. I understand the reason we need an affidavit. One, that's how we're gonna reset this. Um, even if we don't know the exact date, I, I don't know that we should have them swear to an exact date cuz they don't know an exact date. Number two, we have to have an affidavit cuz we have to know what you're, what you're building, your, your property at this time has, how many tenants in it, how many, um, rooms are there, how many, that's, we need to know that stuff. Okay, so that's, that's one of the reasons why we have, we're, we're asking for this. Um, I don't believe that this should be made any harder than what it's been made. I am of the opinion this has taken way too long to take care of. We need to take care of it. We need to quit. He says, she says, they say, they, let's just get it taken care of. Okay, let's come up with something that we can, we can deal with, okay? Um, they can't swear to when the date is that their property was put.
Ms. Atchison, if I could stop you for a second. The whole argument is that these were uses before eighty-two. That's their whole argument.
Right, so why can't they put on that date before eighty-two?
That is, that is what it says. To my knowledge, it's before nineteen eighty-two.
It's got.
Pocket of time.
It's a year. Okay.
It's gotta blank. It's gotta blank. So if we, if they can say before eighty-two, if that's okay, then I think they can, because they can't swear to something they don't know.
To clarify, that was my, when I read the affidavit, that was my understanding of what we were looking for.
But I can understand how there would be potentially misunderstood.
Right, and that you say, to my understanding, this was this prior to nineteen eighty-two.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
Pictures of the?
Pictures.
Pictures of the, pictures of the property. What it is being used for right now. How many? Divisions we have, you know, two family, one family, three family, we need that. And I know that, I know that we probably have that through the rental inspections, but we just want to put it down, we gotta have records because we don't have any right now, right? So we need records right now to go forward, okay, so we gotta do a little give and take here, we gotta have a little bit of information. So both of us have to give and take.
Ms. Hamel.
Oh, uh, Mr. Gross, can you go first?
I'm frustrated. Like, like the city manager said, legal non-conforming, non-conforming, it's all non-conforming, it just doesn't matter. I understand their problem in not being able to say this is when it became non-conforming. We all understand they're here, they may have been after eighty-two. For them to say exactly that it was eighty-two or before. If they can't say it, they can't say it. I will admit that the, the form that we had, that I had brief time to review. Was very legally written, and I agree, uh, and it's, that's the way. That's the way a lot of things are looked at, and that's the way it's dictated. It would be very difficult to say. That every one of these was before eighty-two if you don't have the records to back it up. I could walk around town and point out rentals that have been here since I've been here. And that's somewhere around forty-five years now. Can I say every one of them was that way before eighty-two? No. A lot of them I came aware of as was indicated with the fire department. Uh, we discovered one, one time when we were going in to fight a fire and found out later there actually was three apartments in it. Cause we didn't even know. Uh, so, I mean, it was challenging at times, but I. They've been here and uh, a sworn affidavit is a sworn affidavit, it is a legal document. That could come back to harm somebody if all of a sudden it was found out that that wasn't exactly the way it was. I, I agree with what's being said down here, that. We all know they're here, we understand they've been here. We don't know exactly when they were here, but they have been operating as such. And the verbiage on that somehow has got to reflect that, and it's just the basic knowledge, as was said. To my knowledge, has, it's been since eighty-two. That's your knowledge. As far as you know, that's it. That's the only sworn statement that I would have to see. You can't write in blood that this is the way it was because you can only have that blood to give, you don't have those facts. And I think that's what's got to be, it's just got to be, they've been this way. Then it's got to be, you either got to prove it is, or we got to prove it's not. Let's get it done, let's get it over with, get it settled, and let's get on, so. But I also understand there's legal ways to have to do things, so. I'm somewhat simplistic at times, I just want to get it done also. Unfortunately, there are legal things that have to be done, and, but I think there's a, a bridge in between here somewhere, that discussion. Not argumentation, but discussion and, and uh, legally speaking, that it could be done. Through a mutual understanding of what we're here to do. That's it.
And Mayor, if I could correct, uh, Mr. Gross, because he's not making a legal statement. Uh, his statement that we both have to prove one way or the other is not the legal standard.
Right.
If this does go to court, I want to make sure that's very clear.
Sure, and that's fine. That's, and I, I stand corrected, because that does, that does smack of being illegal, okay, so, but it's just. This is the problem we're all in.
And Mr. Gross, if, uh, you did have the opportunity to read the affidavit, there is language in there that says, to the best of my knowledge.
I'm not denying that, but it depends on how they're reading it, as to what they're seeing, it does say that in there, and I agree, that is there.
Because if they have knowledge that the conversion happened after eighty-two. Then it was an illegal conversion.
And if, if it was converted in two thousand, we are not doing this.
Well, I don't agree with that, I don't agree with it.
Well, that's what our ordinances say.
I understand that, but the city has known about these properties. For that entire, how can you say no? How can you say no? The city didn't know?
He didn't know when he had to go into it for a fire.
I'm not saying every single property. But there's no way that you can logically say that these properties that have been inspected. We did not know were multiple uh, uh, family dwellings. That's ridiculous to say. I get that we don't like it. I get that we let it go and, but it shouldn't have been allowed the whole time. I, I understand that. But you cannot then say we didn't know, yes, you did. Yes, you did. And this affidavit is very co, like, it's so complex. Like, I so appre, I can't explain my appreciation for you doing all of this, because I, I get it, it's like. Like the number of bedrooms and all that stuff, we do need to have actual record of, and that part needs to be in there. However, I don't think it needs to be this complex. I, I don't think that they need to put in like, the description and the deed and all that stuff, but we have it already, I don't think that we need to put in. Um, when it was, because at this point, literally, that's why we're at this point, is because we don't care anymore. It was really crappy.
You're speaking for yourself when you say you do not care.
Yes, I am. Yes, this is all my opinion. I think it's really unfortunate, I should be more professional in my words, that the city let it go on this long. And I also think it's really unfortunate that the landlords. If you had a property that was converted afterwards, that it wasn't done legally, that wasn't right either. So I'm not saying that that was totally okay, and now I'm like, well, oh well, it's been done, so good job, you guys. That's not the case, but both of us messed up. And so I think that the year that it was is totally irrelevant, we've moved on from that, in my opinion.
Mayor Conley, I understand.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes, um, I, I know that I cannot vote, but I was, am I able to participate in the discussion?
You are absolutely. The chair will recognize you.
Thank you, and, and um. I, I apologize, I cut you off, were you, were you done? Thank you so much. Um, so the entire crux of this problem. And, and what we have, or at least what I have understood to be hearing from landlords, for as long as this is an issue is. We don't have it on paper, but we know these properties were converted before nineteen eighty-two. And so we have given them a legal mechanism to say. We know these properties were converted before nineteen eighty-two, and now they're not comfortable saying that. So what they really want is to be granted blanket permission. Regardless of what did or did not exist in nineteen eighty-two. And they can want something, but that doesn't make it legal. I want to drive as fast as I can on the highway. That doesn't make it legal. So I can appreciate that this is a difficult situation. Especially because they're having difficulty finding records that support what they're saying. But in the beginning, I heard lots of, well, we talked to former mayor Tousink, and he's willing to sign an affidavit that. So, okay, if you're willing to take that word, why are we not willing to say I, in writing? Before nineteen eighty-two, in which it would be grandfathered. They can want something to be legal, but it doesn't make it so. Thank you.
Just switch line ten to say it was done before nineteen eighty-two. And then say that.
The best of my knowledge, I think.
To me, the issue is we don't know, like, was it seventy, was it seventy-one? Like.
As indicated.
Saying it was before eighty-two, so.
As indicated before, this was a rough draft. Um, and uh, some of the things have been stated at this meeting might have some merit, and I'd have to look at them. Obviously, there is. There's been a lot of things said at this meeting, so I don't remember everything that was said, which is one of the reasons I'd like to put everybody in a room to discuss these issues.
Totally.
Who's told me not to talk to their clients.
So can we have our city attorney then talk to? Their attorney or whatever.
Their attorney is refusing to speak to our attorney.
Okay, then our city attorney then make the. Cause for whatever reason, people have decided. I really wish that we could just all be kind to each other. I'm like, really struggling with that. Like, we have so much crappy stuff going on in our lives, can we just be nice to each other? Can we just be nice? So if he's asking for your feedback, please give it to him nicely. And if they don't understand something that you have to put in there, please explain it to them nicely. And if they don't, I'm not saying that you do or you don't, I'm talking to everybody. I feel like a whole lot of this issue would have been solved if people would have just been nice to each other from the get-go. We don't have to agree. And the city attorney make the draft instead of putting you in the middle.
He was trying to save us money.
I understand that, but. Sometimes money isn't everything, and I, I'm not saying that you did a bad job at all, so please don't.
And a mayor.
Think that that's what I'm saying.
Five minute adjournment before we discuss that issue.
Sure. Sure, we'll be adjourned starting at eight twenty-one for five minutes. It wouldn't save us anything to go this far. I don't know if that's true. It has to be empty.
It's become way more potent than it ever should have been. Well, and I don't know, and somewhere there's got. We can't really discuss it. Well, but the thing is, it's a group action type thing, and if somebody is saying you got one. Can't discuss much more. Well, I, I appreciate the thought, okay?
But can you sign, write it up? Yeah, well, write, write something up.
If there's a, if there's a statement. If it's accepted as, that the best of my knowledge. It's always been, or it's been just from.
Yeah.
But the thing is.
That's, that's what a best of my knowledge means. But write something up, write, write. And, and just get it to us, email us.
Alright, cause you do, I mean, basically.
I mean, I wouldn't think we need.
Just write something up.
Oh, and what's, what's to write up, if they don't know what they're writing up?
Just what they can sign, let's write it up, write what you'd be willing to sign.
Alright.
Best of my knowledge, that's all I can do. The one that's, the one I wanted to. I was actually doing a legal one anyway.
Whatever.
Martin, Martin was running the pumper, I was mending holes, just the two of us.
Please tell me this was a long time ago.
A long time.
Yeah. No, that's why I said it, I'm like, please tell me this was a long time ago.
Are we, are we recording yet? We're not recording yet, alright?
It's, it's going, we're, we're adjourned, but.
Okay, so you, you muted us. See, that's what I'm saying, we can't discuss.
We can, so what happened with the fire?
Anyway. I pulled the hole as Martin started the pumper. I started around it, it was in the back, back through a back door. I got to the drawer and stopped because Mary's working, they can't do it. All of a sudden, the hole started falling easier, I thought I had somebody backing me up. I went inside with the fire on, turned around, there was nobody there with me.
We thought he'd help you.
But not going with you, oh my gosh. No.
I don't think so. Cause I don't think Rose.
We're just not ready.
They are still recording, so we can't really discuss that much.
No.
No, no, I, well, I have. It's not, it's not over there.
No. I can get, I can guarantee you, no.
Can't go back and race past.
Glad you wore your butterflies today. Glad to wear your butterflies today.
I normally wear red. But I, I, uh, this was supposed to be my Monday outfit. I lay out my clothes for the week, it's Monday night, I don't know what that says.
The whole week?
I gotta get a kid on the bus and I have to go to school. And so, um. Think when you can think. And then it was read a book day. And I'm sitting. It was read a book day, National Read a Book Day was Monday, so I was like, oh, I gotta go find my shirt that says, like, read a book. So this was Monday's outfit. Cause then Tuesday was, um, just open house.
Monday, we didn't have school.
Right, sorry, Tuesday was read a book day, Wednesday was open house, so then I had to have a little suit that I had for open house. Oh. Okay. One minute warning, and we are going to uh, come back from adjournment. Are you okay? Do you need to, I was gonna say, do you need to like step out to? Do you have, I mean, I get it. Yeah, ditto, like, I would be like, okay, somebody's bleeding or something's on fire.
Your husband loves you very much. I'm sure he does.
I'm gonna just need. Oh, hey, you got the Kleenex by you, anybody need one?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I might be crying in the.
I am somehow fortunate.
My eye is running anyway.
To dodge all of this crazy virus, I, I gotta go get shot five here.
Skip into the new one.
That's the new, well, that shot five for me. Four in February. Four in February. Alright, we are back in session at eight thirty. Alright, we, um, I spoke with the city manager. And we seem to still be having some struggles with how to get the affidavit put together. What I would like to do is direct the city manager to sit down and have a conversation. We'll have to get some clarification. That the, um, property owners do not have legal representation, that they have signed off on that. We're gonna need some legal documentation of that. Because once we have legal documentation that you have an attorney, and that attorney keeps telling us you have an attorney, we can't pretend you don't. If there isn't written documentation saying you don't, if you want us to do this and not our attorney to do this. So, Mr. Manager, this get everyone in a room piece.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I mean, again, some of these things have been stated, might have some legitimacy. I'd be happy to. Change nonconforming to legal nonconforming. There is no difference to me. Um, but you know, I, I drafted this on my own, just in the last couple of days. Um, but at, at, at a mayor, as you indicated, right now, we still don't know if they have legal representation. Be happy to speak with them, put them all in a room, hammer some kind of agreement out where they'll all be cooperative to the affidavit. Um, and then we'll put this to bed.
And just to be clear, you need some written documentation that they are not being represented by an attorney. Because we have a very specific letter saying, do not talk to my clients.
At the very least, uh, something saying that they're waiving their rights to have their attorney present at this meeting.
Something to that effect, because otherwise it becomes coercion, it becomes all kinds of things. If you want not our attorney to talk to you.
They wanna be cooperative, they wanna put this to bed, they wanna get an affidavit that they feel comfortable signing. I think that's a reasonable.
You have a question, Ms. Conklin.
Oh, I think she's scratching her head.
Oh, okay. I'm, well, I'm trying to, like, if you. Do we feel like this is a thing we can do?
Yes, I'd also like to say that, um, I'd like to be present for that meeting. And was told that I could be as long as there's not four of us that wanna be present. So three of us can be present.
I would like to be present too, if that's possible.
Oh, Madam Mayor, just so we're clear, um, this is not going to be city council members directing the conversation.
Yep.
Um, you know, they're, they're, they're welcome to be part of the conversation, they're welcome to, um, play referee if they'd like. Um, but it's also gonna be a question of trying to get seven, eight people in a room. Gonna take some, uh, figuring out what time and date work for everybody.
Their schedules, I think, have to take primacy.
Yep, that's fine.
And then the next piece is, I would like to make sure we have some clarification on the zoning language. I don't know if you need a thing from planning commission. I don't. I'm like, what is a nonconforming? That that's a thing.
Literally written in the order.
I understand, but we seem to need that printed, we need it.
We'll make that part of the conversation.
Okay.
One question I have is we've, um, expanded this from R one. Nonconforming to R two, B two, B three. Can we just start with one, R one?
Yeah, to be fair, that was probably a mistake, uh, because I see those are going to be the next problems.
It's a different issue.
Yeah, it is. And I think like we should solve this first issue.
It's a very similar, uh, related issue. And I was hoping to put an affidavit together, which solved all the issues at the same time, but. Again, if they don't feel comfortable with it, I'm happy to do it piece.
Take it out, yeah.
I don't feel comfortable with it.
If, if I could make a small regression here, there is a difference between legal nonconforming and nonconforming.
Right.
Nonconforming implies that it became nonconforming after ordinance changes. That's strictly nonconforming. Legal nonconforming is anything that was in place prior to a, uh, a code change. So there is a difference, there is a difference in the two, but they are both nonconforming, okay?
The other thing we need to address is. Uh, built for purpose apartment. Which is different than a, a multifamily, a single family home that was converted to multifamily.
But that's not part of this. That's a, that's a variant, that's a variance, am I right?
But we'd have to address it at some point in time.
There's another, that's another whole challenge that could be discussed that at the same time they're discussing the rest of this.
So if we don't wanna do the B twos, then the, then we should not be doing that right now.
I understand that, but it is something for the future.
We got lots for the future.
We do.
Okay, are we, are we good?
I've got some issues to deal with after the meeting, but, uh, yeah, for this.
Okay, do you feel like you have a basic direction?
Yes, thank you.
And everyone here feels like they have given their input questions, discussion?
Yes.
Alright, we're moving on. So let's see, we are at item B, discussion on updating the twenty eighteen staff salary pay range. Twenty twenty-two proposed staff pay range adjustment, proposed clerk election pay memo. Um, Ms. Nixon, did you want to comment on this? Cause I know you and I have had several comment conversations about this.
Yes, um, I'm going to need just a moment though to, um, get to that page of the packet if you can bear with me.
Sure, I can go ahead. Does anyone else? Uh, Ms., Ms. Ech.
Yeah, there's a, a, a mistake, um, in here that it says the clerk should be paid two hundred dollars. In number two, and in the parenthesis, it says two fifty.
I, I don't know which part you're talking about.
No, never, um, required election work time.
Dealing, dealing with the election hours.
Should be paid two hundred dollars, two fifty.
There, there's two portions. There's the days where she has to be here to hand out absentee ballots.
Like Sundays that.
Yeah, so it, we, this was my intention, regardless of how it's written, um, is that I think it's between one and five hours spent, should, should be paid. Hundred dollars, anything above five hours should be paid two hundred, but then on actual days of elections, it would be two fifty.
Okay, so you're, you, you have written before the parentheses two hundred, not two fifty.
Are you there, Ms. Nixon?
I am, and I, I've gotten to that page, um. Uh, so yeah, so there was a, a lot of information, um, provided, uh, by the city manager and the clerk regarding. Um, salary studies and, uh, differences in, uh. Work expectations that have happened over the last, uh, few years. Um, and it looks, uh, it looks like the. Adjustment to the city clerk's pay range has been added to the proposed salary range adjustments. Um, so I think that when we had spoken about this. And looking at communities of similar size, uh, that we, we found that. Um, that they were making, um, more than we had currently paid our clerk and found that. In light of the additional duties that were required, an adjustment was warranted. Um, and it, it appears that we have a sort of a five to ten, ten to fifteen. Um, or excuse me, one to five, five to ten, ten to fifteen, yeah, yeah. So, um, it, it appears that that's, that's been added to this proposed salary range adjustment. And it, it was fairly in line with communities, uh, of our similar makeup and size. Um, I think that we had drilled down to Kent County, if I recall, um, was that, am I recalling correct, Ms. Conley?
Three, there were three municipalities.
Um, yeah.
That were similar.
I, I tried to pick ones that had both similar population and similar budget. Uh, Lowell just happens to be a convenient one because they're reasonably close, but they are slightly bigger, um, a slightly larger budget, but they are comparable.
And the, another was Miss Keegan.
North Muskegon.
North Muskegon.
Williamson, yeah.
And then we also noted, or I noted, that it looked like they all had, um, marijuana. As part of their ordinance packages, which becomes one more thing that the clerk has to deal with. As we saw having people here dealing with, um, licenseings. If I recall, or most of them did, Lowell did, Muskegon did.
Believe at least two of them, I don't remember the others.
Which is an added duty. So additional thoughts, Ms. Nixon?
Um, no, I was, um, I am, I'm happy with the proposed salary range as presented. Um, you know, our, our clerk does a lot of, a lot of training. Um, she's required to be the expert in how. How elections are run and, um, is legally responsible to make sure that they run well. And, um, has done an exemplary job in that. So I would be, I would be happy with this proposed salary range adjustment.
Question, Ms. Ech.
So is that what we're looking at here? We're looking at, um, twenty eighteen versus twenty twenty-two. And we're looking at it particularly, um, I must have missed this in here. Mike's.
Page six.
Yeah, so we're looking to, looking for, um, information on Rebecca's salary, is that what?
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at increasing the salary schedule for the clerk.
Okay.
Because the duties and responsibilities of the clerk, I mean, the initial, it was some crazy like thirty-eight thousand.
Which I agree with. I just wanna make sure that. We're looking to increase her sali- salary along with what we're, um, proposing for election days.
If I could interject, this is not about just the clerk, this is about all.
The one that had the particularly large shift. I mean, I would argue.
So in, in other words.
They all do a little, but.
In other words, we need to be in line with what other places are paying their people, because then we could keep our staff and we can actually. Get quality workers, which I believe, um, our staff are quality workers. So I think that, um, we need to pay them as such, and I believe, um, particularly Rebecca does a ton of work.
It's just a job that's gotten a lot harder.
He does a lot of work. Yes, he does too, but I'm just saying far as, um.
But the, the clerk job in particular has come with a whole lot more responsibilities and than it did say twenty years ago.
Absolutely. So we're looking at this range here. Between the two.
So. Four years ago, we hired a group called Rombeck or something like that, um, to put together a salary schedule for us, which updated the. And I think two thousand five or two thousand two, really old previous, uh, salary schedule. Uh, we paid that ROM group a significant amount of money to do that. Frankly, I was not that impressed with the work they did. Um, so again, I put together what I would propose. Based on a number of factors, including the inflationary index and, uh, comparing ourselves to similarly situated cities. Um, the actual work you don't see compared us to about twenty other cities, uh, between about twenty-five hundred people and about seven thousand people. Um, to see what they paid each of these different positions. Um, compared that to the inflationary index, make sure we were within the lines of cost of living adjustments. Um, and the numbers that came up with are the numbers you see. Now, the city does have unfortunately a slightly basic system of, here's the minimum salary, here's the maximum salary, here's your midpoint salary. Uh, there's no definition, definitions given for that. Um, obviously, if somebody comes in with fifteen years' experience, they shouldn't be making the minimum just because they just started, right? Um, and then the maximum, is that the maximum I'm entitled to pay somebody? That's how I've been treating the scale. Um, but just for today's purposes, um, you know, there are lots of jobs available. We've got good staff. I think the council and I wanna keep our good staff. We need to be able to be, uh, able to pay them what another community is willing to pay them. Um, and I think that's what this, uh, pay scale does. It updates it to today. Um, and it gives me the legal authority, uh, and political authority, uh, to pay my staff more money. Cause right now I've got several people who are maxed out under the old pay scale.
And several people who are getting recruited by other places. Okay, so Lisa and then, um.
I believe in the past that the city has had committees that oversee salaries. Is that correct?
Not in the time I've been here, um, there are cities that do that. You know, the, the city manager is capable of doing it, uh, the board is capable of doing it. Um, there's all sorts of different ways you can do it.
Okay.
Prior to Chris Burns, that was how it was done.
Right.
Um, it was shifted under Thad. I mean, we can, we can shift it again.
Well, I'm sure that we should be able to take care of it. I just wanted to make sure where we weren't.
And that was, uh, actually one of the things I believe we charged him with when he first came in was we, which is why we had this group do this of. We need a, a overarching structure of what do we use for this? And so what he basically was saying is, yeah, I can, I can do that without paying them fifteen thousand dollars or whatever it was we paid them. Um, using their metrics of size and so on to see what's happening in other places.
Right.
And one of the things that he and I and Ms. Nixon specifically spoke about was also our concern that. Some of the jobs, for example, clerk has definitively changed. Like what we used to ask a clerk to do twenty years ago is now not what we ask a clerk to do. Especially, you know, we have people on the other side of the state who are behind bulletproof glass. And there needs to be some reflection of some of that.
Yes, and when we look at our records from.
Right.
Two, we know that somebody dropped the ball somewhere along the line.
And so if we're expecting that level of accountability, we should, and expertise, um, we should expect to pay for it. So that's kind of what this is about.
I think we're very, very fortunate to have the staff we have and they work their guts out for this city.
Yes, they do.
And I totally appreciate it.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so. To me, the numbers, I can't tell if they're fair or not, cause I don't know. So I would advocate that we do have a third party person do it, not that you're not capable of doing it. I just want to remove any, like, opinions, I guess. Or like, I don't know what you call it, like how in, like our salaries. Like we voted on it, but it's not us that make it up. Does that make sense?
So there's, uh, there's a committee that.
Yes, like. Yes, cause as awesome as you are, I don't think it's appropriate for you to make determinations on your own salary. And it could come up that you. Uh, are entitled to more.
Clarifying, I don't set my own salary.
So you're doing this, these numbers so that we can agree on it or not. So we're setting it based off the numbers that you gave us, correct?
Kind of, but you guys vote on a contract for me.
Yeah, right.
And the contract is what sets my salary.
Right.
Then.
The contract numbers are based on this.
It can be. You guys are not bound by your own policy. Um, so you can pay me more or less, or offer to pay me more or less. Um, this is just kind of a recommendation. But I am bound by your policy. So when I pay my staff.
Staff, oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Still, my opinion stands, I. I think that we need to have a third party person do it, who does this for a living and looks at all the stuff, especially since we're saying that. Her job, I'll be your job. And everybody's job has gotten ten times harder. And so I don't feel comfortable making a decision based on. Numbers that I don't fully understand or that I can't ask what the difference is, or like, if it's salary versus not salary, or like how the. Um, raises work or like, um, how can you compare? I don't know, just extra things that she has to do, how much is that worth? Like, how much is that worth? Which you might have an idea. However, that's not, that's not what you do for a living. That's all I'm saying.
That's a totally legitimate, uh, point, but it's a little bit more complicated than that.
I. I believe that. Um, I'm sure that Mike's thinking, he over, he supervises over his staff. So he knows how hard they work, what work they do. Is that, is that correct? Is what I'm saying? You're, you believe that you're.
Partially, yeah.
Yeah, um. I, not that I don't agree with you, I'm just, I'm thinking that's what he's thinking. Um, but that's probably why they had these committees in the past, is because then. they could get that input from him and get the input from us and then figure it out.
Okay, Ms. Race?
My question was, when was the last time we did a salary range adjustment for the clerk?
Uh, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen was the last time. Did we just approve of a fifty-dollar per meeting addition? And when was that?
Not. That was the city manager's policy because he can't change her pay scale. Because the pay scale.
Number of fifty dollars.
Is what it is.
Pay scales are policy. You know, I can't give her more above the pay scale, so I offered the clerk fifty dollars per meeting that she takes minutes after the regular work hours.
And that was done when?
About a year ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And then this other policy that you see in your packet would likewise be my policy. That we pay the clerk these additional sums for these other, um, election-related stuff that she does.
So the, the, the total amount does not include the additional.
Right.
Other thoughts? This is a discussion item. Ms. Nixon, anything else?
Do we, excuse me, I'm sorry. Do, do we have to adopt this pay scale or?
No, this is a discussion.
Discussion, because obviously I want to see what you guys have to think and, uh.
I think we should adopt the newer pay scale.
I think we should as of now, or I don't know.
Are you, are you wanting to make a motion to make it an action item?
Well, that's up to Lisa.
Yes.
I'm just saying that I don't agree with keeping it at this. I would like a third-party study. But I'm fine moving it up for everybody now because clearly two thousand eighteen to now is.
Motion, probably have a second before you discuss.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so is there a motion?
Yes.
To adopt this.
To adopt this pay scale.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question before voting.
Yes.
So for the sake of budgeting and cleanliness and raises going forward, it may behoove the council to consider adopting this effective as of the beginning of the fiscal year. Which would be a retroactive.
That would be July.
What's the beginning of the fiscal?
July one is our fiscal year. Um, one of the reasons I put this as a discussion today in a, in line with council policy to discuss things twice.
Yes.
Um, is I suspect in October, you guys are going to get our glorious news that we get every October, which is the audit's been complete and here's how much money we saved you last year. You know, in addition, we, th- this is a, a, a busy community that's developing. Your budget's gone from one point six million to almost two point four million dollars this year and six years that I've been here. We've got a hundred-plus homes are being built. We've got a probably a thirty to fifty million dollars of investment going on in your West Street project. Um, and marijuana businesses, depending on how much marijuana is sold in the state, we're looking at potentially two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're not hurting for money. If the board wanted to approve of this pay scale and give me the authorization to adjust some of my staff salaries, we have the money to do it. We'd have to take it out of the fund balance because as you guys indicated.
Wasn't budgeted.
Was budgeted, but it's not going to hurt us. But the reason I put it on for discussion item today was to generate discussion. And if you guys want to come and talk to me and tell me why you think one way or the other, I'm happy to do that between now and the next meeting. Uh, but this is your guys' policy discussion. Handle a vote.
There's, there's a motion and a second on the table, so other discussion.
My question is, how would we bring it to a third party?
Uh, there's a variety of different third parties you can use. We could go through MML. We could go back to the folks we used before.
What's MML, sorry?
The Michigan Municipal League.
Although last time in twenty eighteen, they refused to do it because they were too busy, so they sent us to the Romberg folks.
Okay, and not impressed.
I wasn't.
Like it's, I mean, literally just took data and plugged it into a computer program, like.
We paid them to do fairly.
Well, but I mean, it wasn't.
But it's no different than what I've done today.
Yes, I was just gonna say that. It's not going to be much different than.
You're not going to get anything any different. And actually, you'll get less different because it doesn't account for this. This is where he and I and Ms. Nixon sat down and said, okay, we need to drill this down to West Michigan. We need to look at communities of similar size because what's happening in Detroit is not necessarily, um, the same as what's happening here.
Cost of living is higher.
What, what could be helpful, Menomayer, is, uh, Ms. Hamel wants to come in or anybody wants to come in. I can go over the data and explain how the numbers were extrapolated. To at least show, you know, kind of the methodology.
I just don't understand how we put dollars to the extra tasks that are now needed. That's like, that's my issue. Like, I get that, like.
Well, I hate to tell you.
I think that you're fully capable of like putting together like the, like bringing in the data and doing that, like please don't think that I don't believe in your numbers.
But here's the thing.
I just don't under, I don't know how we would say like, this is what everyone's doing, however, like based on when, because now we need to add in extra tasks. And for me, like you said, with our budget going up and stuff, the people that we have are really awesome. Um, so adding in, I don't know, I'm literally making stuff up, five thousand dollars or whatever for added tasks that you do. Like that doesn't seem like a big ask, but I don't know what that work would be worth. I don't know if it's only worth a thousand dollars. You know what I mean? I don't, I just don't know myself.
I think we're talking about two separate things because there's a salary schedule. And then there's these pieces that are additional.
But that should be in the salary. Like first, so me, for me as a dispatcher, when we started, we, as dispatchers do lean stuff, so we put all the warrants into lean, we took that over from the court, so the courts weren't doing that anymore. That's an added task. So you don't give us extra money, like if we're adding in warrants, you just increase our salary because our job description includes more things now. So it's not like a à la carte. It's just you do more stuff. So you should get more money.
Additional?
Yeah, but I don't know, no, 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 no.
Because I was saying, as a teacher, I literally have those scheduled beats.
Goes up because now you have more, more things to do.
Are you suggesting that I remove the pay I give the clerk now for taking minutes?
No, well, I, maybe if we increased, yeah, actually. So it depends on what her actual salary would be. If her salary compensates her extra for that fifty dollars, then yeah, it's kind of.
The, the idea of that is.
Half a dozen of one thing, six of another. Like if that includes the fifty dollars, then.
Well, but the idea is, is.
Getting it anyway.
If we have a special meeting and she comes in to take the minutes, she gets paid extra for that special meeting. Where if it's just in her salary, she doesn't.
But if her salary is high enough, then we don't need to do the extra.
If I may interject.
Yeah.
So her salary or any salary of staff covers the hours they are expected to be in City Hall or doing city business during the Monday through Friday schedule.
Okay.
So when we're at, say, for instance, a city council meeting, we can divide down any salary to say this person based on we expect them to work this many hours and we pay them this ma- salary for this many hours, we can figure out their hourly rate. And then we can use that to calculate a nice, close round number, um, to say we can expect a city council meeting to last two hours and pay them that nice round number.
Yes, so like to use crazy numbers, if we gave her fifty thousand dollars only, she gets fifty thousand dollars and then on top of that, we also want to pay her for the meetings and extra stuff after that. That would make sense. But if her salary is going to be seventy-five thousand dollars, then I don't think we would need to include the fifty dollars. Do you see what I'm saying?
Sam, how do you think it is I set the salaries for my staff?
I'm at, that's exactly what I'm saying. It's I don't know.
Are you, do you trust me to set the salaries for my staff?
I, I don't know because I don't know what I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I don't know the piece of the extra stuff on top of the stuff that she does and that you do and any other person does in the Monday through Friday. Because we're saying that city clerks now have to do extra stuff. Or like with the marijuana license or whatever, like having a second precinct, that's extra work, having a person underneath her. That's also.
Would you like to refer all staff to a, a salary committee? Instead of having the city manager pay for, set their salaries. Because right now you're saying you don't trust me to.
That is not what I'm saying. Nope, that's not what I'm saying.
The difficulty is, there's, I, this is the way I see it. We have, we have two competing issues here. One is what should the clerk's salary be? And what should overarching people's salaries be? And we had outside company give us a recommendation by taking numbers of what everybody was paying and lumping them together and giving us a list of numbers. And the manager and I said, one, that's outdated. And two, it really wasn't really reflective because it took communities that were really big and it took communities that were really small and it took communities that were on the other side of the state. And so it didn't really reflect what it is, and we paid these people a lot of money to do this. So what we did instead is had him pull, because those numbers are all completely publicly available because it's foible. We took those numbers for what looked like more um, representative communities to get us to a number that looks like we would be paying what other communities that look like us do.
Right.
Then there's the piece of additional things that she's now being asked to do that she could say, no, I'm not going to do that.
More like we're telling her she has to do it.
Right. It's not necessarily part of her job. Like, okay, as a teacher, I am contracted to teach a certain amount of hours when there aren't any subs and I cover someone else's class, I get paid extra for that. If I'm not doing it, I don't get paid to do it.
Which I'm not arguing that that shouldn't be the way that it works. That's not what I'm arguing. Really not even arguing though. I'm just saying that I would prefer it to be a third-party person that comes up with the numbers and I totally with what the extra stuff is, especially since we said that there was more stuff that we do, that they do now than they did before. That's what I'm saying.
Do you want a third party for the extra parts of the job that are not the required part of the job?
Yeah, but also aren't there extra, extra things that they have to do in their Monday through Friday? That's what I'm saying. It's like if we add a new precinct to what you were pretty close to doing. Granted, I don't know, maybe that wouldn't be included because she's not doing that right now. But I'm just saying that kind of stuff. Does that make sense?
That's the part where we compare on the size of the community. And if we go up to another precinct, we're looking at bigger communities.
Okay.
Nice. Sure. Um, I think what you, tell me if I'm wrong, I think what you're trying to say is on top of Mike's recommendation, you'd like another piece added, somebody else's recommendation, so that maybe we could get two sides, like they're seeing this other, you know, in looking at what she does for her work and he's looking at it and, you know, both, then, then maybe we'd have a better idea of an amount if they're, if they're two different amounts.
That, and I just think it removes the like.
One person making the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why I was trying to say that you did, like.
This is why it's in front of us.
I don't think that, but we're getting numbers from the city manager. That's what I'm saying.
Um, um, these are, numbers are publicly available. I have to provide them.
He and, he and I, like, looked for these numbers.
Okay.
They did the work that this third party would have done.
For, for fifteen thousand dollars.
But you're not just looking, she's not just looking at the, the pay scale. She's not just looking at what each, she's look, she's trying to come up with a, a good way, um, where it's not just one person making the decision and, um, getting different views, I think.
That's, but it's the city manager and the mayor.
Mayor, and actually we brought the mayor pro temp in also.
Yeah, and you are looking at comparative.
Right.
Cities and locations and s- some city clerks might have two or three assistants. You never know.
We, well, again, we tried to look at places based upon size.
Right.
That Raleigh probably didn't.
Right.
I mean, that was part of the.
Based on population and.
Right.
I, I really don't feel that we're ready to vote on this, no. And we probably shouldn't since it's just discussion. We should.
Well, except now there's a motion on, in a second.
And that wasn't, I mean, that was more to adopt this.
You can withdraw the motion.
Um, than it was to, um, I would like to remove my motion, um, and for more discussion until, until we have more discussion.
Okay. I would encourage, Eerie, have a say.
I disagree with the removal.
Okay.
Meantime, if we've already decided that, that these people are underpaid.
Right, right.
Tell them, wait, we're going to continue on to pay you until we decide what we're going to pay you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay?
Yeah.
I believe you should follow through on your motion. We bring it to a vote. If it passes, it passes. If we decide to revise this at a later date, and so be it, then we bring in another motion. We correct it.
I stand on my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, but just to be clear, this isn't just the city manager.
I'm saying these people.
Yeah.
These people.
Right, 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 right. But I'm saying the city manager isn't the only, the city manager didn't pull these numbers out of the sky.
I'd like to publicly say that I believe the numbers. I, I'm not saying that you just made things up and were not using.
No, no, I, I was all the liar today, so I must be pretty good.
Okay.
Let's get back to, let's get back to the task at hand.
If somebody else said, I'm not.
The motion's already been seconded.
Yes.
We're withdrawing it. We're in discussion.
Okay.
And I can call for the vote whenever y'all feel like you're done. But I was still hearing over here that you didn't want to vote on it tonight. So, and I'm hearing over here, we need a third party that you don't like this particular structure. So I am trying to figure out where we're at before I call for the vote because I couldn't just say shut up and vote.
I appreciate that, Pam.
So I did put it as a discussion item because I want people to be comfortable with this because Ms. Hamel does have some very good points. I did these things fairly. I used appropriate numbers. I've been in consultation with the mayor and the mayor pro temp. Uh, but.
We had four meetings on this, five?
And I think the, the ultimate thing here is my staff is dedicated to the city. They don't show up for the paycheck. I don't show up for the paycheck. Um, I do want them to be paid fairly. But if we have to delay a month so that the city council, who are the representatives of the citizens of the city, feel comfortable with the pay that they're paying their people, I'm okay with it.
But we're, if we do it retroactively, it's.
Well, yeah, but they still don't get it until we vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to the Ronnie Merlington or the sixteen. We're supposed to have a discussion and then an action item.
Unless we waive it.
Unless we waive it. So we have to do that first. We have to vote to waive it, right?
Well, actually, I think we repealed that as a.
More of a policy thing.
Yeah.
Your policy, so.
I thought it was state policy, that's.
No, 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 no. We, that was a p- policy we implemented as a council. It's not state, it's not a state law.
All right.
But we can, but we can absolutely vote to say we're going to do this on this first call.
Let's bring it to a vote.
Okay. So, well, I guess here's the question. Would you, do you want to table this to put a motion on the table to vote on this in one go instead of making it a discussion item?
I don't think we need to. I stand with my motion.
Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote. Ms. Ashson?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Cowling votes yes. We have a new salary schedule.
Thank you.
Now, just to be clear, this does not mean that there can't be amendments made to this.
Yeah, are we going retroactive?
That was part of her motion as of the fiscal year, right?
I believe so, yeah.
It was not.
No. Yeah, adopt the adjun- or the pay scale as presented.
And if I could interject, you guys are only approving a pay scale.
Yeah, we're not, salaries.
Manager set salaries. Yes.
So I would like to make the motion that we adopt the, um, salary range as of July first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
For purposes of this conversation, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
Because I couldn't have raised their salaries six months ago.
Right.
Um, but it just.
He can, he can make it retroactive.
I, I don't need that motion.
Okay, then I, then I won't make it.
I appreciate it, but I don't need.
Sorry. Hey, we good?
Yeah, I think so.
We good? All right.
Like I'm crying on a hill.
It's okay. It's hard. I got it. And everybody's doing extra jobs in everything, because that's how it works. Because there's like twelve of us left still doing jobs. Um, excuse me.
Do we have to, um, vote on that, the extra stuff?
The proposed clerk election pay memo?
Yeah.
Oh, that was simply presented for you guys to see what.
What he's doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right.
And in my world of a teacher, those are called Schedule Bs. Where you get paid separate from your contract for additional duties. But, um, because you don't necessarily do them all the time. All right, so then we are on to city manager personnel evaluation proposal proposed for October council meeting. And there's a new evaluation form because everybody hated the old evaluation form. If you had a chance to look at it.
So supposed to be held in August.
August.
Uh, but we're a little late. I apologize for that. So, correct, uh, we have the old evaluation form, which I inherited from somebody who inherited it from somebody. Uh, you guys have expressed your dislike for it in the past.
It's been used since Chris Burns.
I don't care. Um, obviously we have a robust discussion in closed session regarding my personal evaluation. But I put together a new form if you'd like to use it, um, that is more, in my opinion, a little bit easier to use. The only thing I'd ask is we don't mix forms, so it would be nice if council would choose one or the other.
They pick the old one or pick the new one?
Or we could pick some other one, but I don't have another one available.
Do you have thoughts?
I don't know which one I have.
Yeah, that's.
No one or the old one.
For me, but I. The one that's in the packet is the new one.
One that says draft on it.
Probably the new.
Okay.
Oh.
One that says draft on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so can I clarify?
Yeah.
You want us to fill this out? And, um, do what with it?
So traditionally, we've gone into closed session and discussed my evaluation. Um, I'm required, you're required, that's the first time I could say that. You're required under my contract to provide me with a written evaluation.
So this is our written.
This is your written evaluation. Now, you can put as much or as little as you want on there. You can say as nicer, meaner things as you'd like to put on there. But things that are written down are generally provided to the newspaper.
Are we putting our names on these?
Uh, traditionally, that's not been the case. But I, I also don't know if I even see these.
I always have, but you don't.
Well, don't you see it if it's in the newspaper? I would look it up.
Well, so.
Compilation is in the newspaper.
Obviously, we'll be discussing things and I know who's talking to me. Um, but traditionally, the clerk has taken possession of these and then I only see them if I'm scoring points. Um, which this, the new one doesn't have any points on it.
The previous one was a rating of like one to five. And then we would hand them all to the clerk. The clerk would take all of them, combine them together and create an average for each piece. Which then like went to the newspaper.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I know this is, if we don't have a lot of time for this, but I would, would like to see that us fill this out and give it to a board member, council member. Them kind of compile it and them be the one that makes the comment about what has been said. Um. But I'm just thinking that it might be better coming from one person.
The mayor.
I know, I see her shaking her head. I'm just trying to make it easier.
The way that we, the way that we did it before, the, the clerk didn't, the clerk didn't make any judgment on it. She just put it all together and gave it now.
I'm not seeing a judgment. I'm just saying.
And then she would hand it to the mayor and would then say, this is what the compilation is.
Another problem with that.
Out to the press.
Other problem with that is if these things are anonymous, which I'm not judging you guys based on anonymity. How am I supposed to know what problems each individual person handles?
I would.
Hey.
I agree.
If you guys are going to make comments about me, I want to hear what you're saying.
We were talking. I said too many.
I want to laugh too.
I said too many females up here. Needed girls doing that.
I'm trying to make it too complex. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just we were just talking about.
I'm just making a.
Just not making things complicated.
The question, the question.
Okay.
The question that's on the table is, do you want this new form or do you want the old one?
I haven't had a chance to review the new, new one yet.
The new form's fine with me.
But it's fine. I didn't like the old one, that's for sure.
Okay.
So anything's.
I mean, we could try to go for a third form, but then we got to go find it.
I think.
And we're doing it next month.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in theory, because it was supposed to be done in August.
You, would you like a valuation before next year, sir?
Yeah, I mean, so currently I have a, a contract in place, kind of, with you guys.
Yes.
Um.
Kind of.
And this is, you know, giving you guys the opportunity to sit in a room and bounce off each other even how good or bad of a job you think I'm doing. Uh, before I come back and say, I'd like, you know, money please. Um, but also it's a learning experience for both of us, you know, I, I know I'm not perfect. You know, and there's sometimes there are misunderstandings about how I go about doing things and I appreciate when you guys give me the opportunity to explain some of that. Uh, but it's the one time a year that we can, without the prying eyes of the public, discuss these things.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem myself discussing these things. Uh, what I was just offering up was the other option because some people don't say anything. You know, and that might give them a better option. So that's, that's why, why I was saying what I was saying. But I'm fine doing it the same way.
I understand that. I honestly think though, if you're in this position and you can't give constructive criticism comfortably, then you really shouldn't be.
Or praise.
This is, huh?
Or praise.
Yeah. I mean, this is absolutely, like you said, this is learning for everybody and so.
And it doesn't have to go out to the paper. To just be clear, we can give evaluation and feedback because the city manager is an employee. He usually chooses to release it to the paper, but that is not a, it's not foible.
Part of transparency of my government.
I understand that, but it's not, like, we can give him feedback that isn't necessarily foible. When we're in a closed session as an employee evaluator.
Especially if it's spoken.
Right. Which is why we go into closed session for it. Because we don't have to go into closed session, but it makes sense.
Closed session in this instance is actually controlled by the employee.
Yeah. And I was saying, like, you don't have to, but it's just like you don't have to release it to the press, but you choose to. So.
Yeah.
Right now, the discussion piece is, does this work for you? Okay, so straw poll, you okay with the new form?
Yeah, it's better than the old one.
Okay, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on.
Thank you.
So to the best of your ability, please fill out the new form if you would like. And then at the next meeting, we'll have a closed session, hopefully not at nine eighteen.
Going to be sick that day.
Can we call in, um?
Discussion. I will let you call in on Zoom. You just can't vote.
Oh, there you go.
Because the chair can recognize anyone for account for discussion. All right, discussion on memo regarding ordinances affecting driveways.
I really don't want to talk about this one, but the mayor did ask me to put together a memo for all laws that affected driveways in the city. I have done that. Um, I don't want to discuss it.
Yeah, I, this is mostly I want y'all to look at it.
I make a motion, we table it.
Well, it's, it's a discussion item and we don't have to have a discussion discussion, but I want, if it wasn't in your packet, you might not be paying attention because this is going to be a thing. That we're going to have to deal with is we have non-conforming stuff going forward.
Right.
So please refresh yourself. Maybe that would be a good way. And I know those of you who are sitting on planning commission probably don't need that directive. Or those who attend all the planning commission meetings don't need that directive. But some other people probably do. And some of our stuff is, um, has been redone and changed and shifted and particularly with this.
Change to never caught up.
Right. So please take a look at those. Any specific questions about what you're looking at?
Please come to the city manager to discuss things.
Yes.
If you come, talk to me.
But is there any question about what I'm asking you to look at?
No.
No. Okay. Then moving on. Discussion in the main street seats, streetscape and vegetation.
I may be unfairly trying to move this along because my wife told me to pick up food on the way home and I'm not sure whether it'll be open at ten o'clock, but. Um, yes, so I've had a number of businesses and property owners come to the city and say they'd like to see something different uh, on Main Street regarding streetscaping and vegetation. Uh, with the twenty twenty-three Main Street Millenfeld, we're going to see some of that done already. Everybody's got an opinion. We're going to be spending potentially five hundred thousand dollars on a park on Main Street. Uh, my recommendation would be that we put together a committee, a, a subcommittee of the city council to discuss some of the preliminary issues that we're going to be dealing with on streetscaping vegetation. And then, um, either through the subcommittee or back to the full board, uh, determine a course of action for dealing these, with these issues moving forward.
Is this a DDA piece?
DDA would be strongly encouraged to be participants in this. Uh, but what I suspect will probably end up happening is doing something similar to what we did with the Parks and Rec plan.
Okay.
Uh, which is have the board and anybody else you want there, along with a professional, uh, to talk about this issue. But I'd like to see a committee of this board or the planning commissioner, DDA, whatever you guys want to choose, sit down and hammer out here are the issues we want to talk about. Again, you don't have to determine today.
This is a please think about it?
Definitely, please think about it. And this is something that we will have to address in the near future.
Okay. Everyone feel like you understand the directive?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Communications, community event calendar? Sure. Oh, right.
That's right.
Sorry. Ask. Yes.
I'll leave them as I put together.
Yes. So. I just want to know how the agenda is put together because, uh, you seem swamped. And so I, I don't know what if what your recommendation is for fixing that. I'd love to hear it just because we're getting the agenda really late consistently and I have multiple things going on in my life as I'm sure everyone does. And it's super important to me. I do read this and I do read the manager's report. Um, so I just want to have ample time to do that.
So I, I'll initially apologize. This month was a bit of a flub. Uh, I was in Alaska. Um, I thought the meeting was next week. So when I came back, I spent a couple of days in the office on the weekend trying to get all this stuff sorted out, plus the two hundred emails, the community events, including the one.
And then the two hundred.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you don't, you are just sitting around doing literally nothing. Like, I know that you're.
This month, I apologize. That was totally my error. Um, and hopefully it will never happen again, you know, if you guys ever unchain me from my desk to go on vacation. Um, for the most part, part of the issue is, uh, you know, everybody wants their thing on the agenda as quickly as possible. So they'll show up on a Monday or something, three days before your meeting and say, I really need this on my agenda. Or I'm going to have my thing ready by Thursday, which is when it should be done. Uh, and then they don't show up and then they cry and say, well, can you wait till Monday? Uh, and sometimes it's, I'm working on things through Thursday and then I come into the office on Friday and finish it up. Uh, it should be, but done by Friday. That's the, the goal date. But to answer your question from a strict perspective, um, I follow Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order indicate that the secretary is me and the executive is her put things on the agenda.
Um. My policy is if any of you want anything put on the agenda, it happens. But you have to tell him.
In time.
In time.
And then if I, for some reason.
Maybe we need stricter rules for people.
Well, yes.
They're going to come and yell.
You're absolutely correct.
But like, I don't feel comfortable making decisions if I haven't read any of the information. So like, it kind of behooves them to have a board that has read what their issue is and can formulate that. I mean, you've seen me today. I have had not one good coherent thought this entire meeting. Because I haven't had time to like, put it all together and think about things and ask myself questions. Like, go back and answer my own questions, talk to people. Like, we literally just got this yesterday. So, and that's, again.
You're tired of it. Again, I apologize. It just happened.
I'm not saying, it's not, yeah, I understand that. And you deserve vacations. So that's not what I'm trying to say. I guess I'm just looking for what you think would be a good solution and perhaps that's not you doing something, but other people having a hard deadline so that we have a hard deadline. Because I get that. It's a cascade. It's a domino. So if people are giving you things late, then they're going to be late, right?
You have a hard deadline. You are no longer a cooperative city. You are a uncooperative city. You are not business friendly.
Planning commissions have been having this battle for quite a while.
I don't know that I agree with that.
This planning commission for years.
Mm-hmm. I don't recall it's in our charter.
It, it, it's not in there. There's no specific. It just says that the city manager will.
Policy I was told when I started six years ago was one week before your meeting. We can extend that to two weeks.
Well, if it's one week, then it should be on Thursday then, not Friday.
So now is it Thursday at five thirty PM? Because of stuff, stuff on my desk at five thirty, I'm not sticking around.
Exactly, but why is that your problem? That's what I'm saying. Why is it your problem if somebody's going to give you something late?
Because then.
They want it to be on the agenda for this month and they need to do it before five thirty. That is ridiculous to expect you to put stuff together.
City is not friendly. The city is not cooperative or anti-bus.
Send them my way then. Like, I will literally talk to anybody who's going to say that you're being uncooperative by not pushing on the event agenda.
I don't refer things to individual council members.
Well, the council in general then is what I'm saying, because it's just it makes no sense to expect you to do stuff with zero time. That's a ridiculous expectation of yours.
And I agree, but I still somehow find a way to get it done generally on time.
So here's the question. And, and planning commission's been battling this for a long time. Do we want people to be able to come in on the Thursday before and put something on the agenda? Well, I mean, that's also what we have public comment for.
Rose. Sorry. Go ahead. If you're going to make the agenda, finish it on Friday, and I understand you're interrupted all the time, then I think Thursday soon enough.
Well, except he's not actually supposed to be working on Friday. It's like asking the rest of us to come in on Saturday.
Right. So then we would have to say, get it here on Wednesday and that's the drop dead date. Otherwise, you're going to have to wait.
Y'all okay with that?
Unless they come to the meeting and say, I have a, uh, emergency uh, addition to the agenda. That's the only.
We're going to have the public coming and putting in emergencies? That we have had zero time to look at?
And the city manager's here. If we want to accept it onto the agenda, but that's essentially what we're making you do. If we don't have a hard, like.
So.
I can't imagine that somebody is going to have a problem with a one day. There's a deadline. There's an obviously a deadline because we're having this meeting now and we already set the agenda, correct? So there is a deadline. If we move it back a day, I find it very hard to believe that somebody would disagree with that and you should not be working on your weekend.
Have not met the public.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
Which, you know.
Then I will talk, I was, I was elected by the public. I have no problem whatsoever telling people that there is a deadline and if you would like your thing to be on the agenda, it needs to be done before the deadline. Like.
Hey, we can, we can set a hard deadline and we can take this on, but then we can't be saying, well, please, if you have an emergency, come to public comment and we'll put it on the agenda.
No, because I'm not, I'm not doing that. Like, I'm really not doing that unless we're talking about a burst water main or, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not doing it. And those would be, the DPW does what they need to do and then they tell us about it afterwards.
That's not the public coming.
I don't know if she was saying that we would put it on the agenda, but people have asked for things to go on the agenda and we've not put them on the agenda. So I think you can recall.
As a rule, this system works. Okay. The gentleman has admitted, there was a little slip up here and part was based on the fact they took some time off. We all agree he takes the time off. Stuff happens, okay? This was a one-time shot. I also read everything that comes across. I want to be prepared. I will admit there was things that I had to speed read tonight that probably didn't get all of the reading I normally would give it. But I had an understanding, basically. But I had an understanding basically. And through discussion here, which we've had a lot of tonight, a lot of that stuff was covered. I think, I think this was a. This was somewhat of a freak event. And I also understand there's sometimes things get lost in, in the life of other people that all of a sudden becomes a rush to us. Albeit, we have to adapt at times too, but uh, and I'm not saying don't read the stuff and don't understand it. Because I think that's important for all. This is a board. Take that time to read it and understand and be prepared. I think we're spending some time right now on something that. I doubt will happen again. Right away unless there's another emergency or something in his life that keeps him from doing it. So.
We usually get it the Thursday before, the week before. Although you frequently has to add things on to us during the week.
I will admit it's been a while since it was done on Thursday. It's usually done on Friday when I come into.
You come in and do it, yeah, because people have dropped it on your.
It still gives you a weekend to go through it. Whereas this time it just didn't happen to do that, so.
And I'm actually a little frustrated that you're having to do that on Fridays because.
Well, I wanted to hire an assistant city manager this year, but uh, when we budgeted for it and then looked to see what kind of candidates are available, they wouldn't. Come here for the amount of money we had budgeted for it. And now that the money that we budgeted for it's going to go to my other staff. I'm not going to have any money for an assistant city manager. So, this isn't a simple issue.
Just don't take your race. Sorry.
Let's get serious and finish the agenda, please.
I'm, this is the discussion item. I'm the person who put it on the agenda. Do you feel like you have gotten the discussion or response that you're looking for?
Yep.
Okay. And we are moving on. Communications, community event calendar. Anybody got anything? Any questions, any thoughts? Red Flannel?
Uh, blood draw is the twentieth and ever since I've mentioned it at a city council meeting, the uh. Number of draws have been going up, so I'm gonna keep bringing it.
I think you should absolutely do that. I appreciated that, uh, Kami at the library talked about it.
Time again.
Uh, it starts at noon to seven. Gonna make an appointment on their website, Versity website.
V E R S I T Y?
I.
I. V E R S I T I?
Yes, or they do accept walk-ins if they can, they will. And they're running the one old. Type old blood, always.
And it's at the library in the community room?
Yes.
So, and I'm assuming they have like cookies and juice?
Always.
So, absolutely.
Sometimes gift cards and prizes, all kinds of stuff.
Oh, can we? That's for this month.
They do it every month, right?
Yes.
And you can give every other month.
Why is that not on the calendar? Is that?
What calendar? Calendar? Well, we could certainly add it.
That's a good idea.
I think it should be on there.
Not a city event.
Yeah. Well, and it used to be, um, like at a church. Like, it was, so it was a, a nonprofit organization hosting it at a church.
Private events at a private location.
Right. So now it's, um, at the library, which isn't exactly a city property, but.
Well, not a city event.
Yeah.
I'll just keep yakking about with them.
Which we're happy for and.
You did a good job. I just was curious.
Get blood, but that's.
That's right.
Has to have stuff on calendars.
That makes sense. Um, we could have them ask to make it a monthly community event.
That's possibility. I'll talk to women's club about that.
See, let me speak with the clerk about that. There might be an easier way to resolve the issue.
Okay. Or it's women's club that host it and we might be able to create it as a. Community event.
Problem with making a community event is now you're implying that the city has to approve of it. If it's being located entirely within the library, uh, do we not have any say? Um, but it's not really our event to approve of.
Okay, we'll work out something.
So it might be easier for me just to talk to the clerk and say, hey, let's add that to the calendar.
Simple. Okay, there you go. MML dividend prop- or uh, dividend property and liability return.
Get that each year. It's just a little refund for us.
Nice. And MML is municipal, Michigan Municipal League, Rose, because I think Ashley just asked about what that is. It's the, um, overarching organization that does our training and our governance. And helps us create policies and.
Have a great website, a lot of good information about hiring and wages.
They're the ones who do training.
Okay, I was just gonna say that was the one that does the training.
Yeah. So that's Michigan Municipal League. And Rose, you've been, you've went to a whole lot of those.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, I've been to a few, but Rose is like our, our person who's been to like.
Been, been gone. Yeah, I've been gone, so.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. Mun- uh, municipality determination letter. Six twelve venture state license approval.
This would be the state approving of a local marijuana business.
Right. Which is the thing we were dealing with fixing at the last one. Uh, Louise King Library Board resignation. I saw that, that I have several board appointments. We need to, I need to get you, I have a couple of names.
So usually the more difficult thing is finding the volunteer.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of people. Uh, so we'll need to do that to make that happen.
Usually just ask that they fill out the.
Form, right. So I need to send them in to have them do that to. Approved Cedar Springs Area Chamber of Commerce, the Cedar Springs Christmas Carriage Rides, December first, eighth, fifteenth, four to nine PM. Done that in the past.
Did ask that they increase the visibility, uh, and the reflectiveness of these carriages because I understand that they've been not very visible at night, uh, in the winter.
Yeah, that was a concern. And then approved American Legion Car Show, August thirty-first, Bridge Project. Meeting minutes, Cedar Springs Library Summer Reading Memo, which Kami told us about. COVID wastewater surveillance findings. I'm just gonna keep rolling until somebody stops me. Updated CDBG sidewalk grant proposal, West Street Pump House. Anybody got anything? Good?
The COVID wastewater surve- surveillance findings, the mayor sent them to you, but last meeting, I think Ms. Powell asked about it. Um, same document that the mayor could send. Just put it here just so you guys see what I get. Unless you guys specifically requested, I'm not gonna send it to you. Uh, CDBG sidewalk grant, we just had to make some modifications. You see the updated map there. Um, this is an ongoing thing. You'll probably see additional changes. Now, the West Street Pump House, uh, somehow the original proposal was. I don't know what you call it, but basically a fake rock you put on top of it. It was.
Yeah.
Totally unacceptable. Um, so we went out and got a quote for a proper.
Pump house. It wasn't a fake rock. Um, and then we've got some more stuff on the engineering on that. Because there was a question of like if it was gonna work. The, the new, the new lift station piece.
Oh, no. I mean, that's stuff we worked with internally with Bill, uh, Mr. LaRose and.
Okay. We, okay. We don't have anything new on that that we need to. Uh, then the city manager report. Any questions on that? As I see the emails fly out at eight o'clock at night.
Also, I'm too late to get Chinese.
Oh.
Having paninis now instead. With my wife who has a terrible head cold. Uh, yeah, I mean, th- this is not an easy job. I try to resolve the issues, both that citizens have and that the council has. Um, you know, sometimes, uh, there is truth to some of the things that you guys hear and sometimes there's falsities. Hopefully I'm doing the job that you guys hired me to do and hopefully I keep doing it the way you guys want me to do it. If not, you're gonna have, uh, all the time in the world next month to tell me.
Department of Public Works, Bill, who's been patiently on the line for forever. You got anything for us, friend? Other than you've been like, I don't know, rebuilding the entire city from the road up?
Um, I do not. Uh, projects are finally wrapping down a little bit. Things are slowing down. Uh, mostly underground's done. We've got one water main left, uh, to connect and. Had a lot of brown water because of the water main projects. We flushed last month. That should go away too.
Thank you for fixing the road out in front of the school. That was a big deal. As the buses started to roll.
Yeah, we got that done just in the nick of time, thankfully.
You did. It was amazing. So thank you for that. And it was your thinking that got it so that we could get it in and get that bid because Dean's was there and that was huge. As, as literally. Thousands of kids are rolling across that. Police Department, got anything for us? Sounds good. I like to hear that from the police department.
Been waiting all night to say it.
Fire Department, Marty, got anything for us?
Um, in the interest of time, no, no, I do not. If there's any questions, I'll try to come up with an answer. Other than that, you guys have a good weekend.
You too.
Ready?
Marty, you're gonna try to get a new ambulance for us, right?
Well, we're not gonna use it for an ambulance, but, uh, it's gonna replace the. Box type ambulance that, um, former chief girl's purchased. I'm thinking eighteen to twenty years ago. It served its purpose and it needs to be retired.
Marty, what do we do with the fire truck that? Was repl- we, when we replaced it with that newer one?
Don't answer that question. It's gonna be way too long of an answer.
Okay, hang on.
Actually, actually, the, I found that there was two engines that were never registered with the state. I was three months and three trips to Sparta, but I found out we have, now have titles for both engines. And I will get, be getting a hold of, uh, people to auction that truck off.
So just we're clear.
Marty could explain it to you.
So just so we're clear, we didn't steal a fire truck.
Thank you, Marty.
Yep.
All right. City Clerk.
I'm busy prepping for November eighth election. Um, I just received my thirtieth FOIA request for the year, so those are continually to roll in.
Uh, no, I believe September twelfth is the deadline for what the ballots have to look like.
We're doing some preliminary, um, ballot proofing, uh, with the county so that we can. When, uh, language is finalized that.
Yeah, there's a couple that like went to the State Supreme Court today for the ballot initiative languages and so far have been approved. So.
May I ask a question? All the FOIA ones based on the election?
They are not all. There are a handful that are directly related to the election, but they have ranged from copies of agreements, copies to of assessment records. It's, it's really been a wide range, but, um, I would say that there is quite a handful of election-related FOIAs.
I saw the number of them. I was just wondering how many I had to deal with. Election information. Thank you.
I don't have that hard number available.
Then, let's see, Finance Director. Anybody got anything on that?
I'm all set. If you don't have questions.
Miss Falcon, I'm sorry, Ms. Falcon, is the audit for the city complete at this point?
It's, the, um, auditors are done doing their review in-house. Now they just need to wait for documentation to come back from. Attorneys and banks and whoever. Then we'll have a draft here shortly, probably by the end of the month.
Okay, and when do you think you'll have a number for the amount of money put back into the fund balance last year? Next meeting or maybe November?
Um, we should have that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for making a budget that we can all read. Greatly appreciated. Yes, nice pictures. Code enforcement. Anybody got anything? She does a really hard job. Building inspection, boarding commission minutes, council comments. Ms. Powell.
Just looking forward to Red Flannel Day and, uh, the board is working hard. And, uh, they're a great bunch of people to work with, so we'll see you there and see you then.
What, what day is that?
October the first and the parade starts at three thirty.
And just as a, um, because we have some people who weren't on the board the last time. We try to divide up keeping city hall open so that people can use bathrooms. So I don't know, like. You figure out when is a good time for you?
I'll do the ten o'clock shift.
I usually take the parade.
Oh, yeah, the city manager keeps city hall open, but he does occasionally have to go move barricades and other stuff.
Yes.
Does that when I have a city council person.
And I try to go feed in pancakes in the morning.
I'll be here at ten, so you can go have pancakes.
Mr. Gross.
Open enough tonight.
Can you get you pancakes?
There's just some things we need to get squared away and, and do it as soon as possible.
Yes.
Discussion at times, other times we were a lot of, a little bit out of order. And we've been helping pull ourselves back together just a little bit faster, so, okay? Other than that, that's it.
Ms. Axson.
Yeah, I agree with what you just said. Basically, and the way to get things done is to have a discussion and healthy discussion is not always fun discussion. That's all I gotta say.
You're not wrong. Ms. Race.
Higher.
Okay. That is.
A good, yeah, it was just, we need to get this done, so.
Ms. Hamel.
Uh, I just want to reiterate that we need to be kind to each other, me included. And, um, I appreciate literally every single one of you on the board, every single person on the. Um, that works at city hall. You guys are all really awesome. I'm lucky to work with you guys.
Okay, so Red Flannel, Wahoo. Please, uh, think about when you can be here. So the city manager doesn't have to be chained here the whole time. I usually take the time from, um, the beginning of the parade till whenever it closes. But I'm flexible. I can do whatever. But think about what that is and please like talk amongst yourselves about who's gonna be here when, so we have it covered. If you need me to buy, buy you pancakes, pancakes, I will buy you pancakes. So.
I mean, right now.
We can make that happen. And, uh, the Red Flannel has a whole lot of activities. My son and I are doing the five K on the twenty-fourth. So coming out, that should be lots of fun. And, you know, take a look, um, avail yourself of the wonderful things. And be out and about and enjoy the community. And again, hooray on this grant that we all put a whole lot of work into. The city manager put a lot of work into, the DDA put a lot of work into. And it was a big enough deal that it made wood TV eight, so that feels like a thing. And then we're heading into a big old, huge election. It's gonna have lots of ballot initiatives and stuff. So I'm glad we had kind of a nice dry run and that with the primary and things went smoothly, even with some people who felt some kind of way. So I'm glad that some of those things worked for Ms., uh, Ms. Johnson for having you park. And having people with you and so on. So I, I've heard that that went well. So, hooray. With that, we're adjourned.